All right, welcome everybody to the August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four special meeting of the city of Louisville, uh, city council. We will start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Dickinson.
Here.
Council member Bearman. Council member Fahey. Council member Hamilton.
Here.
Council member Hoffner.
Here.
Member Kerr.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
All right, um, first item of the agenda is the presentation of the safety and security in the Boulder Valley School District, and we have a presentation uh from from staff and from our chief, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Council, uh Rafael Gutierrez, Chief of Police. This evening, you'll be presented with information from the Boulder Valley School District about safety and security in the school district. Brendan Sullivan, the Director of Safety, Security and Emergency Services, and Carissa Jaquish, the Manager of Safety, Security and Emergency Services for the school district, will present information related to a multi-dimensional approach to emergency preparedness and management at the schools. Uh, they'll also highlight the collaborative efforts and planning that has occurred between the district, public safety, the Office of Disaster Management, and other partner organizations. They'll also present information related to school evacuations, the decision-making process, and reunification protocol. Uh, the Louisville Fire Protection District Chief John Wilson is also here this evening. He'll provide some information about the fire district's approach to emergency response at schools and how the factors involved lead to the strategy that they follow. Uh, lastly, I'll discuss law enforcement's approach to controlling the scene and coordination with other responders to most effectively manage the situation and achieve the desired outcome. Uh, so I'll now invite Director Brendan Sullivan and Manager Carissa Jaquish to deliver their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and I'll just note that Councilmember Deb Fahey has joined us via Zoom, so she is also uh in the meeting.
Thank you, Caleb.
Just click the mouse to advance it, all right?
Oh, perfect. Good evening, my name is Brendan Sullivan, and I'm the Director of Safety, Security and Emergency Management here in the Boulder Valley School District. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to speak with all of you and explain the work surrounding our emergency planning specifically as it relates to urban wildfire and what our processes are during these events. It's important to understand the foundations of emergency management and preparedness as it provides BVSD a structured approach to preventing, preparing for, responding to, and recovering from emergencies or crises. Tonight, you're also going to hear from Carissa Jaquish, she's our emergency manager for the district, and she's going to speak about our emergency management work, the preparedness work that takes place in BVSD as well as the recovery, and how we reunify students with their families after an event. It is understandable that school safety is a complex issue and requires many different systems and structures to be in place to work effectively. In BVSD, we have implemented this multi-dimensional approach which you see on the screen to school safety because we recognize that ensuring a safe school's environment requires us to address various interconnected factors. We know that there is no one single strategy or focus area that can cover all of our safety responsibilities. This represents the systems in place in BVSD that are the foundation for safe schools. We're going to highlight two of these tonight, specific uh community partnerships specifically with our public safety partners and emergency preparedness. We have established relationships with organizations in our communities that are responsible or support public safety, whether it's the police department, the fire department, emergency managers, Office of Disaster Management EMS personnel, et cetera. These partnerships foster collaboration, shared responsibility, access to diverse resources and expertise. They also inform our decision-making, our risk assessment, and the development of targeted safety strategies here in the district. Chris is going to dive deeper into the emergency management preparedness that at a high level, these processes allow for comprehensive planning, preparation, and response to emergencies or critical incidents that are occurring in our communities or at our schools that are impacting school safety. So BVSD has an all-encompassing written emergency operations plan that assumes an all-hazards approach, and what that means is it addresses natural and human-caused disasters. The plan was developed and reviewed by subject matter experts, including law, fire, emergency management personnel, public health, mental health, transportation, facilities, security, et cetera. It is reviewed at regular intervals to ensure an alliance with current best practices. Each school also has a school plan, and that outlines a specific operational plan for that location, and that identifies key personnel, evacuation routes, number of students, number of staff, reunification locations, students who have functional access or other specific needs that we need to address during a crisis. And lastly, the implementation of the standard response protocols, which is a response plan for critical incidents that establishes consistent actions and language for staff, students, and first responders. This was developed out of the Platte Canyon High School tragedy. The founding members attended school safety conferences, seminars, meetings, they collaborated with public safety experts, psychologists, communities, and ultimately created the standard response protocols or SRPs. The SRPs are data-driven, and they're based on experiences and contemporary practices that are constantly being reevaluated. Today, the standard response protocols are utilized by more than fifty thousand schools, districts, organizations, departments, agencies, and communities worldwide. Sorry, getting different views up here, my apologies. Um, the collaboration with our public safety partners is absolutely necessary when it comes to emergency preparedness and school safety. We're not on the right. I think we got a bad issue right here there. Okay, sorry, my apologies. Um, the collaboration with our public safety partners is absolutely necessary when it comes to emergency preparedness and school safety. I want to draw your attention to the photo on the top right, which is one of the training sessions we did recently with our public safety partners. And this included members of the Office of Disaster Management, our Boulder County nine-one-one leadership, call center, fire, and law leaders, as well as BVSD school leadership, district leadership, department heads within our district, and staff who are going to support schools during an event, and this particular exercise is actually based on a fire event. Uh, these experiences allow us to develop new process and refine coordination during critical incidents. It helps us identify opportunities to approve existing procedures, as well as understand expectations and capabilities of each entity involved during a crisis such as an urban wildfire. We've also developed process for communicating with incident command uh during these events or during these disasters, and that allows us to share critical information related to any immediate safety needs that we're facing. Uh, information sharing is an important part of readiness and response, and because of that, we have provided our P S apps or our public safety answering points, our nine-one-one comm centers, information related to each school site, uh, including emergency evacuation locations, reunification, uh, gridded reference school maps, floor plans, uh, door numbers, facility hardware shut-offs, as well as our school emergency operations plan. We have also developed a partnership with our fire partners, a fire mitigation matrix, which includes information about our schools such as identifying building construction materials, roof composition, whether we have single or double-pane windows, foundation vents, defensible space, roof gutters, building automation systems for HVAC, and air quality controls, et cetera. This information provides valuable intelligence to our fire personnel in the event of an emergency, and it is readily available to them. Exercising, evaluating, and executing our mercy plans identifies opportunities and allows for adjustment, and this is where we see some results. We've talked about some of these already, such as information sharing, evaluating our buildings, training, exercise, coordination, and communication with our public safety partners. But we've also established interoperability with police and fires, as well as direct connections with decision-makers and public safety, such as staff duty officers and fire duty chiefs. This benefit gives a situational awareness to an event that is occurring within our community, allows us more runway to make decisions and mobilize resources to support our schools in an emergency. It also allows us direct connections with those public safety decision-makers. I want to point out the photo on the left, the building with the green roof is Monarch High School, and just to the west of that is Monarch PK eight. They are both fed on an ingress and egress road of Campus Drive. We worked with our partners at Boulder County, as well as leadership from the Louisville Police and Fire Departments and the BVSD Construction Department to develop an emergency access road. This road is accessible for events, sort of for emergency events, um, so that we can get first responders in there, or we can evacuate students out of there. Members of the school admin team, school security, your police and fire departments also have access to the gate. I'm now going to turn it over to Carissa Jaquish.
Thank you, Director Sullivan. All right. Our safety and security team works collaboratively and closely with BVSD staff to ride the foundation and framework for understanding our standard response protocols and the actions to take during emergencies. As Director Sullivan showed, we provide online access to our district emergency plans and conduct scenario-based incidents uh to reinforce these procedures. Our school principals, with the support of our school safety advocates, develop tailored emergency response plan for their schools. So Monarch will develop what's best for Monarch and Meadowlark for Meadowlark, um, and these can be adapted to various incidents. We train our administrators on our efficient two-calls-do-it-all system, nine-one-one for first responders, uh, police, fire, EMS, and our security operations dispatch center for our internal district resources pictured here. Our administrators are subject matter experts regarding their school plans, but may not be familiar with specific police or fire responses during wildfires or emergencies. Our district incident management structure provides our school leaders with the necessary support to make informed decisions for their schools in conjunction with their school emergency plans. Our security operations center pictured here on the right operates around the clock twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and serves as the nerve center for our security infrastructure, much like a nine-one-one dispatch center. As the nexus for critical communication and resource deployment, we ensure a swift and coordinated response to any incident. Our dispatch center maintains heightened readiness and vigilance, especially during those high-risk red flag days, to safeguard our school communities. During evacuation orders, our goal is to evacuate the impacted schools one hundred percent of the time. Our BVSD Security Operations Center and our security staff have interoperability with our first responding partners, so we can ensure a coordinated response for resource mobilization, ingress and egress concerns, and provide information to our impacted communities regarding action they should take regarding student reunification. During incidents, we understand parents will want to arrive at the school, but we ask that they be considerate of the emergency that they're creating within the disaster for parent handoffs, and as well as delays in the evacuation of all the staff and students, and then uh any traffic impacts they may face while coming to and from the school during that emergency. As Director Sullivan presented in slide two, our schools and BVSD communities have robust emergency plans. This includes multiple evacuation and reunification locations for each school, so we can adapt to any emergency and implement the standard reunification method. This photo is taken from a uh training exercise we did at uh one of our reunification locations in the city of Louisville. Yeah, I Love You Guys Foundation not only developed the standard response protocols, their evidence-based research resulted in the creation of a standard reunification method, which goes simply beyond reunifying students and parents. The protocol includes provisions for counseling and medical service, coordination with first responders and victim advocates, and collaboration with external partners such as local hospitals. In the event of an evacuation and reunification, BVSD can activate a team of over fifty dedicated staff members from various departments within our district who are trained throughout the year on incident command structures, the National Incident Management System, and the standard reunification method. Over the past two years, we have conducted training for our district reunification team at various locations in Lafayette, in Louisville, and in Brumfield. We also partnered last year with the Good Samaritan Hospital for the First Pediatric MCI Tabletop, uh, which include first responders from Louisville, Lafayette, Boulder Community Health, and Avista Hospital. So that all sounds wonderful, but how might the implementation of these plans and existing systems unfold during an actual event? Uh, this July, we had the dinosaur fire in Boulder, and so that gives us a good example for us to spotlight how this all comes together. It's important to note that, um, although this was the summer and BVSD schools were not uh in the academic session year, our school facilities remain very active during the summer months, so we have camps going on, community events, athletic competitions that are happening. Our first cornerstone component is awareness. Timely detection of incidents that could affect our schools is crucial, and we achieve awareness through multiple channels. Our continuous monitoring of our police and fire communications radio from that interoperability, notifications from our internal communications department, alert systems within our security department, or direct contact from our first responding partners regarding the incident are just some examples. The earlier we become aware of potential incidents, the more time we have to implement appropriate measures to safeguard our school community. The next thing we start doing on BVSD is taking inventory. Upon identification of an incident, our safety and security team immediately mobilizes resources to assess the situation at the affected schools, gathering critical information. For the dinosaur fire, we are gathering information such as what is the current student population on our campuses? Do we have any ongoing field trips, either departing from our schools or coming to our schools? The number of staff members present who can assist with evacuation? Any ongoing bomb projects that create a potential hazardous uh issues regarding construction? Where is the fire located? How far is that fire from our closest schools? What is the current weather conditions, and how many transportation staff do we have readily available? This rapid information gathering enables us to tailor our response to these specific circumstances of each impacted location, ensuring a comprehensive approach to managing the situation. But we know very well uh that emergencies can change rapidly, therefore, continuous updates are paramount to keep situational awareness. Our teams need to be dynamic and have a broad approach. Our security operations center maintains uh monitors that first responder radio for any developing information, while our security leadership team maintains close communication with our emergency partners such as the Office of Disaster Management or our public information officers if necessary. This integrated network allows us to develop a holistic and real-time assessment of the evolving incident. Our district incident management team, as you saw a couple slides uh before, has an internal communication system that ensures that those responsible for supporting schools during a crisis are well-informed about ongoing situations and can respond efficiently based on up-to-date information and previously conducted inventories. During the dinosaur fire, for example, our HVAC manager, integrated in this internal structure and communications, took swift action to address air quality concerns in the affected schools by shutting off air dampers. Additionally, our community schools program, which does our after-school and during school activities, notify their coordinators who are overseeing field trips about the impacts on returning to school sites. During emergencies, we have over fifty safety and security personnel within our department that assist our schools in crisis management. During the dinosaur fire, our school safety advocates who come from public safety backgrounds deployed to those impacted schools and began discussions with our school leaders regarding what information we are receiving from first responders, what information was available on the district side, and avenues for actions moving forward. When necessary, our safety and security team works in close coordination with our incident commanders from our first responding partners, maintaining open lines of communication and representation at the incident command post, so we can swiftly adapt our response to changing circumstances. This partnership ensures that BVSD is a prize of all the expected traffic impacts, in fact, impacting our resource mobilization, environmental factors that we may not be aware of, such as fire behavior or wind patterns, and how we can support each other to achieve mission objectives. For the dinosaur fire, our contact with the battalion chief provided critical information to our schools on the spread of the fire, containment expectations, and the wind behavior impacting air quality. But even after the incident is contained or concluded, BVSD remains committed to maintaining the safe learning environment for our students and staff through robust continuity planning. Following the dinosaur fire, our district incident management team convened during the late hours to assess school operations. We evaluated our facilities, upcoming activities, expected student attendance in the coming days, any planned events, and determined their feasibility given the current fire conditions. This thorough review ensured we continue to provide a safe and secure educational environment in the days following the fire, and then work hand-in-hand with our communications department and our public information officers to inform our impacted communities about our actions. Director Sullivan will conclude our presentation.
So as we wrap up this presentation, I thought it would be helpful uh to share this graphic as a visual representation of what it has looked like in the past when we evacuated schools for safety or any security issues. So as soon as we're made aware of an event occurring either at the school or within our community that has a potential to impact school safety, our internal communication services occur, which Chris explained. This allows for decision-makers within BVSD to take inventory of staff, resources, uh, understand potential actions that they need to make, they may need to make in order to support our schools. Uh, when the decision is made, our transportation team assembles, and they are dispatching drivers to the school and providing route in these staging areas. Additionally, at this time, a direction is also given to staff on what actions they need to take specific to the evacuation. This would include taking roll call, providing directions to leave personal items such as backpacks, where they need a stage in the school, appropriate exit stacks at the school in order to load safely onto the school bus. Uh, when this is happening, our reunification team is also mobilizing at the site that has been predetermined where we can reunify our students. When buses get to the school, our students and staff are loaded onto the buses, and they travel to the reunification location where that process occurs. There are several factors that obviously need to be taken into consideration during an evacuation process, and although they're listed here, I think some of them important to highlight are the day of the week, the traffic management issues, the traffic management plan, the size of the school, weather conditions, how many students we have, uh, functional or accessibility needs of our students. We thank you for your time, and we hope this presentation has been helpful in understanding our process. I want to finish by emphasizing that our comprehensive approach to school emergencies encompassing meticulous planning, regular training, communication, and partner collaboration ensures that we're well-prepared to safeguard our students and staff and respond swiftly to crisis and create a safe learning environment for our kids. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Wilson.
Good evening, City Council and City Staff, uh, John Wilson, Louisville Fire Protection District. Uh, so I'm going to take it from our point of view, basically, and first of all, I'd like to thank the school district for such an awesome and uh well-planned plan, basically, so they've done their work, they've done their homework, and and they've really come up with a plan that we, the police department, and the fire department, and uh ODM can use uh in a case of an emergency. And we don't just think of just one school, we think of all the schools that are in Louisville. Um, and we look at different situations at all of them, uh, but we'll talk a little bit about Monarch tonight first. Uh, but going back to the evacuation that they have, the slide that they have up here, um, it sounds simple, right? It it sounds like, oh, we can do this in a minute, we'll get people out real quick, and uh it'll be done, and it it just doesn't happen that way. And the school district has given us a pretty good idea of how long does this require to get the students evacuated, let's say, from Monarch, which is probably our biggest school in our area. So it takes about two hours, and so those are the things that we are thinking about at the incident command post of looking at our situation, where's the situation going, because we're not just going to talk about wildfires, we could talk about train wrecks, we can talk about uh fuel spill on thirty-six and so on. And so we're thinking about the incident and trying to determine, is it best to evacuate them and get them out, and do we have time to do that? Or is it safer to defend in place? Think about this, the school is probably the most safest place for your children most of the time. It is, it's a building that's built uh with really good and and really protective uh construction. It has sprinklers, it has uh staff, it has uh great siding and and great roof protection, and think about the landscaping around most schools. It's watered lawns, it's it's a great place to defend. So most of the time, if we can't get the kids out, we're going to defend in place, and that means that we're going to be sending resources to there to make sure that all the kids are going to be safe, because when we do the evacuation, the schools are not only uh being evacuated, but maybe half the town's being evacuated, and those um roads are going to be tied up very quickly. And that's where the law enforcement comes into play, but uh there are a lot of factors that we consider when we are looking at protecting kids in school. Uh, Monarch, luckily, the nice thing about it is with Redtail developing now, we have a better way to get in and out daily uh after that's developed a little bit more, and the water system is going to boost the water system out in that area too. So we don't, we don't only just look at Monarch, but we look at all the schools. We work with the school district, with the law enforcement, to make sure that we are doing the correct thing for the right people, and that's our students. We're also going to take these plans that the school district has developed, and we're going to expand it and look at the hospitals. We're going to look at nursing homes. It's just not one population that we're going, that we have to protect, we have to protect them all. We're going to use these great plans that they have uh to expand on that. So I think I'm going to turn it over to Chief, and he can take it from there.
Uh, thank you, Chief Wilson. I do want to again thank the Boulder Valley School District staff for coming out tonight, I really do appreciate their flexibility in making this uh this presentation happen. Um, also want to credit the fire district and Chief Wilson as well for the partnership and and putting all this information together um for you. I do want to acknowledge the willingness to collaborate that I've experienced in this county, um, in terms of the school district, sheriff's office, Office of Disaster Management, other regional law enforcement agencies, and other human services organizations. Um, there is a very strong sense of collaboration, and I will tell you that the the city of Louisville, the Louisville Police Department are an active member of that collaboration. Um, as as Carissa mentioned, we were able to participate in a large-scale tabletop exercise at Good Samaritan uh several months ago, but those are the the types of events that we're participating in, because that's how these plans come together, that's how we can perfect them, and that's how we can put them into place um later on. Uh, but again, these relationships, they are critical to mutual success as organizations and as a community to build resilience and to enhance all of our prep uh preparedness. Again, the, we've had opportunities with the power outages and things of that nature to work with ODM directly. The school districts is always on-site, they're always collaborative partners, and they're always providing that input and feedback, so I know that the system is working. Um, I have full confidence in it, and again, as as partners in that that larger regional group, um, there's, there's a lot of good things that are that are going on in that uh that realm. I do want to acknowledge the work of Kiana Freeman, she has moved our our city organization forward in terms of being a good regional partner. She's established great relationships with ODM, with other public safety entities, other human services group, the school district. I think having that resource at the city level i- is a tremendous value and a tremendous asset to have that. Um, she's a great liaison between those groups and our our organization, and I think it just really is is indicative of of us taking a step forward to being a better-prepared community. Um, we recognize we're not perfect, but we are working that way, and we're working to improve processes all the time, so I just did want to acknowledge Kiana, since she's here tonight for this. Um, and getting to know Mr. Sullivan and his staff, they do bring decades of experience in public safety. I'm I'm very impressed with their qualifications and and their background. I've had a good opportunity to meet with them, and like I said, we're through a lot of these preparedness plans. Um, and you know, with my twenty-eight years of experience in public safety, they are, they are pushing out information that is industry-best practices, and that's meeting the standards that need to be met from an emergency management perspective. Ultimately, their goal is is they are taking a comprehensive approach to safeguard student, staff, and others in and around the school, and I think they're doing a really good job with that. Um, the police department and other first responders do have access to emergency plans uh through dispatch. They have a a program where, you know, we can access building plans and things of that nature um that they've made available to us. They also highlighted their call center, which is staff twenty-four-seven, so we have the ability to reach somebody with the school district um during any type of event. We also have a really good relationship with the security staff um that are on-site, the security managers on-site at all of the the campuses, and again, we work closely with them to make sure that we're all on the same page. Uh, the communications component is really critical. Um, I've talked before about coordination, communication, and collaboration, those are the three things that bring success. Um, they have the ability to to communicate and listen to information that's relayed through dispatch, um, so you don't have that time lag. They know what's going on essentially in real time, and and as Chief Wilson mentioned, time is of the essence in these situations. Um, we do have access cards to their facilities, we do have keys to the uh the gates on Paradise Lane. Um, so we do have that already at our at our disposal so that we can access these areas uh more quickly, again, to to try to uh to minimize the the time in the response. Um, as it relates to our role in emergency management, events impact schools, you know, we always work to ensure the collaboration, community, communication, and coordination occur. Um, when we talk about coordination in an evacuation- When we talk about coordination in an evacuation event, you know, it's going to be incumbent on law enforcement to work with other law enforcement agencies who are responding to assist with traffic control. And ultimately, it starts with communicating with the district or other affected partners to see what is the objective? What is the goal that we're trying to achieve? So if it is evacuation, we've already looked at all the roadways to understand like, what are the impacts going to be? What resources do we need to bring in? And with that said, we're able to, through mutual aid requests, bring in those resources to help assist with our objective. As Carissa also mentioned, you know, incoming traffic to these school facilities, we're going to have to put access control points. So you're probably going to have to get through multiple points of traffic control in order to even reach the school. Because our primary focus is on the totality of the incident and not just a singular parent getting to the school to take their child home. Because you're pushing them out into an unknown and unsecured element or environment and that's what we want to try to avoid. So looking at, you know, if our objective is to evacuate Monarch, for instance, there are several egress points that we would try to control. Trying to push people out to probably 96th higher volume roadway so we can increase the traffic flow as much as we can to get people out of the area. Their reunification protocol is top notch. They have, you know, they have primary, secondary and third locations where, where, you know, potentially we could, we could reunify students and their families. So again, they've covered all aspects of what an emergency plan should really come into play. They do follow the incident command structure. So it's very easy to integrate with them. They can integrate into an emergency operation very quickly, very easily. And they know what their responsibilities are, no different than where fire or police fit into the role. And I guess lastly, I just want to, to point out that we are, we're going to be launching a campaign here in September. And we want to encourage community members to, and really beyond to stay informed by registering for emergency alert notifications at bokoalert.org. Part of being informed and being educated as to what's occurring is through the systems that are coming into place. So the Boulder Office of Disaster Management and Dispatch, they manage our Boko Alerts and our Everbridge system. So as a contracted agency with, with the dispatch center, we're able to utilize Everbridge. So the city is looking to, to push forth a campaign to increase registration so that we can increase awareness so people understand what's going on. So you'll see some city communication coming out here over the next couple of weeks in which September is going to be our focus to get people registered for Everbridge notifications. And like I said, there'll be some information going on, going out about that as well. It will culminate in a test in October of that system for anybody who has opted in and or landlines within the city of Louisville or the Louisville Fire Protection District. Again, it's to try to show people that the systems do work, to provide confidence in that, that notification. And again, it actually relieves dispatch centers from fielding a lot of questions about what's going on so you're able to get that. So, you know, I know that was kind of an aside from the overall conversation, but we're talking about emergency preparedness. And, and I think that's a good thing just to highlight and be on the lookout for, on our website and social media channels for more information on that campaign that should be coming out. So at this point, I'll conclude the presentation. The Boulder Valley School District reps, Kiana, myself, Chief Wilson, we're available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I think we'll start with public comments. So if there are any members of the public who would like to comment, this is your time. Do we have anyone who's signed up? Great. So when you're called, if you can just limit your comments to three minutes, there'll be a timer so you can keep track of that. And if you have pulled your time with someone else, either here or online, you can have up to six minutes. And we look forward to hearing from you.
First up is Tanya Samaru.
Yeah, you want to press the button until you get the green light?
This one, the green one. Okay, hi, I'm Tanya Samaru, Larksburg Lane. I just want to say thank you to Chief Gateras and Chief Wilson and Director Sullivan and I missed your title, Carissa. Thank you so much. I spent time talking to all of you and as a very paranoid parent, you know, especially in the previous meeting, it's here, I left feeling completely buzzing. So I'm also, I'm also sort of, I'm at the crossroads of the Marshall Fire Recovery Community. And I'm admin on the biggest Slack and everybody talks to me and tells me what their feelings are. And I've heard over and over again since the fire, what about school evacuations? We're so concerned. And I just hope, I just press upon the city that this is a very special community with special sensitivities. We had a really terrifying traumatic experience of suddenly a fire being in many neighborhoods at once and having to flee and not being able to leave. And, you know, I talked to some parents and people who have a very deep, deep sense of mistrust. So when I hear about school evacuations and traffic coordination, I have a lot of faith and trust because I know the people who are coordinating and working on this personally. And I've spent a lot of time talking to them, but the rest of the community is not really getting a lot of information about how things, how many things have improved. Preparedness has improved since the fire. And I just want to point out that the city has a big burden. Like I hope the city sees it as its job to win back resident trust and they absolutely deserve. You know, there's been so much work, it's absolutely deserved to win back that trust. But first, we need a lot of communication. I've, we're going to go talk to BVSD this week. Brandon Sullivan has granted a group of residents a meeting. And we're hopefully going to talk about communications and what kind of things, how to get some more information to parents. You know, you would be surprised what some people have said to me, like, I will never trust anyone. I will drive down the sidewalk and drive through the glass to get my kid out before I leave them to, you know, that just people have had certain experiences where they, they were in this very chaotic scene. And I hope that, you know, we just keep working towards more preparedness awareness and the alert test. And this is a very important thing for the emotional recovery of the town. I think we're, we're on a great track and I feel really good about it. But I do care about, you know, everyone else having the same feelings I do because, yes. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Next up is Diane Marsala.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. First, I know that time is limited. I just want to thank you all for having this meeting. It's really important, but I do think there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. I appreciate Fire Chief Wilson giving the estimate of two hours to evacuate the two schools. I estimated easily an hour and a half. I'm talking about the worst case scenarios of another Marshall Fire or an active shooter. And that's what everybody needs to be preparing for. It takes a half hour to get out of Monarch High School parking lot on a Wednesday afternoon. That's with no chaos, no anything else going on. The locked gates, somebody has to have keys. Somebody has to be able to get to those points. If there's something bad happening in the school, they're not going to be going outside. If there's a fire and there's a wind event, how is that going to happen? You're going to have traffic on 88th, you're going to have a hostel needing evacuation, right? So there's a lot that needs to get done. You have over 2,000 students between the two buildings that would need to be evacuated on a regular school day. And that's accounting for vacancies due to illness, et cetera. There aren't buses, there are no buses servicing Monarch High School. Where the driver is going to come from to evacuate students? That's another big issue. The campus drive, that's great, that eventually there's going to be work done with the development, but that's, that's going to take years. So it's not a matter of if something else happens, it's going to be when? And I don't think we're prepared. I sat last night at the end of the back to school night at Monarch High. I was in the lower parking lot, not at the corner. Only about half of the parking lot was still, had cars there. It took me 15 minutes to get out. And I thought, my God, if there's another event. So what's going to happen is students in the high school will, if they can, get to their vehicles and plow through fences to get the hell out. And I've advised my daughter to do that or run. Because you're going to have a choke point of 2,000 students, parents, Rock Creek, trying to get northbound on 88th. Because all you have is McCaslin. I think there's a lot of issues here that we saw at the Marshall Fire. And, you know, there isn't, people can talk about plans, but that's the real reality of how do you move that type of traffic out? So thank you very much. I hope that there's continued meetings and discussions on kind of the worst case scenarios because I really think that's what needs to be looked at. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up is Jenny.
Hi, can you?
Yes, we can hear. Or we could, now we can't. I might want to try on meeting again.
Oh, there we go.
There we go.
You can hear me? Good, okay. Hi, this is Jenny Singer-Rupp. I live on Muirfield Circle in Louisville. I first of all, wanted to just thank everybody for making this presentation and this meeting topic happen this evening. I kind of view it more as an intro to a discussion that we might revisit in the coming months. You know, as I was listening to the presentation, to be honest, I don't have that many comments. I have more questions than I have comments. So I'm really, really happy that we started the discussion, but I'm hoping that we continue the discussion moving forward. A few questions that I had based on the presentations was if residents are going to be in an evacuation, can we as parents assume that the schools will be evacuated at the same time? Or should we not assume that and how would that look? Then I think what would be really interesting is since we did have the Marshall Fire, if there would be some kind of case study, like in retroactively, what would have happened if school had been in session during the Marshall Fire? And this is what we would have done? This is what it would have looked like at Monarch? This is what it would have looked like at Fireside? This is what the evacuation or not evacuation would have looked like at, at Coal Creek Elementary? That would be really helpful as parents to kind of wrap our heads around a specific scenario that we're maybe more familiar with, that we can understand a little bit better. So once again, thanks very, very much for bringing this topic to City Council. And thank you to BVSD for presenting and look forward to more discussions coming up. Thank you.
Next up is Anne B.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm Anne Brennan. Thanks for the opportunity. I live on Larksburg Court in Louisville. I actually have a couple of questions. I'm really appreciative that the City Council invited this presentation and opened it up to the public. I think a lot of us have been hoping to hear about what was going on with the schools for two and a half, a long time. Not two and a half years exactly, but two and a quarter years. And I guess my two questions that I don't think I've really heard us talk about is this question of communication. One, if school started this week and back to school night was last night, I'm wondering what was communicated to parents? Because as we know, any day, the wind could crap up and there could be a spark and we would be in a bad situation. Or as Chief Wilson said, a train derailment or a fuel spill on the highway. That could happen at any moment when the kids are in school. So what have we already done to this point to communicate this information to parents? And along those lines, how would communicate, how would decisions be made in the moment? Because if it takes two hours to evacuate Monarch High School and the Marshall Fire started 11:30 and it was in Louisville by 1:30, that's, that's two hours. And so we can't take two hours to evacuate when things are changing that fast. So could, could that question, I don't know if this is just comments or if we can get answers to questions. But so I do have two questions. What has been communicated to parents so far about the process? And if, if it hasn't happened so far, when will that happen? And what would communications look like to parents and students in the moment in the event of something happened tomorrow when class is in session? Thank you.
Next up is John Mahaly.
Hi, can y'all hear me? It's actually Shannon Mahaly. Not much new to add to the conversation, but just want to echo what others have said again. Thank you to BVSD and thank you to City Council for being open to this dialogue. And again, just a quick note of encouragement to keep this conversation open. Specifically as, you know, city evacuation routes also feed into this planning. So as much cross dialogue as we can have with this conversation, the better the overall plan will be. And just kind of a side note too, another suggestion, maybe this has already been looked into, but related to some other comments about timing of evacuations. Specifically, the timing of assembling drivers and buses seems like it may take a fairly long time. You know, if we're in a situation where we need to evacuate quickly. So, you know, just looking at the timing of what all these steps would be in the process. But again, thank you for starting this conversation and greatly appreciate it.
There's nobody else.
Thank you. Okay, well, that concludes the public comment for this item. Thank you all for being here and lending your expertise to the conversation. At this point, we'll take it to, you know, council questions, comments. Like I think you can obviously talk about anything you heard in the presentation or comments from the public, but need to you guys to, who would like to go first? I saw, I saw your hand go up. Judy.
We were just talking. I was like, I'll let the people who actually have the kinder in the schools go first. But I was curious about a couple of things. There were a few points brought up that I, that I really like to whoever wants to kind of jump in. I guess the thing is, have any of these plans been conveyed to the parents? And how are they currently being conveyed? Is it with the school night? Are you sending something home with kids, asking them to sign up for Boko Alerts so that parents know that that's how they'll get notified?
So specific to our emergency operations plans, it's not something we widely communicate out to our community. It's really something that is internal with either our public safety or those that are responsible for responding to the event in the school. And then I would say that the Boko Alerts, we can have conversations with the chiefs and figure out how we want to do that moving forward through this campaign to also advertise that information.
Looks like I'm going to have a lot more to talk about later this week though, doesn't it? Since we're going to be talking comms, I'm part of that group that Tanya was talking about actually of residents. It's going to be trying to figure out how to make the communication piece work and I'll bring that back and share it with everyone. So let's see, I, what also is, you guys were talking about how you were evaluating the schools, how they're built, how they're hardened, the landscape around them to make sure that they're safe. Are there improvements that need to be, we're bringing up Monarch all the time, but we have a lot of little elementary schools in neighborhoods with trees, big trees around them. Are there evaluations being done on those elementary school levels as well as something as large as Monarch High?
Yeah, so we have a, an internal document that we've shared with our fire partners that has all the, all the conditions of our buildings, right? Of whether, what their fire readiness looks like, defensible space, vegetation, et cetera. So there has been an inventory of every school in the district that has been shared with them.
Is that also conveyed to parents so that they have an understanding of whether the school is something that's going to be a defended place school? Or if it's a school that would, you know, be evacuated because it doesn't really meet the standards that, you know, police and fire are needing?
Sure. And I think it's important to understand that those decisions will be made in a silo. Those aren't decisions that are made by the school district independently. We would communicate with police or fire command to understand the fire condition, location, what its behavior is, traffic management issues, all of those variables that would play a factor as well as the space that we have, the resources that they have to defend it, et cetera. So those are, those are really decisions that we would make as the event's happening of whether this is a defendant play situation or whether. as the event's happening of whether this is a defendant place situation or whether we're evacuating.
Pop in real quick. And this is not one and done. We're reevaluating all the time. So just like every school year is a new year to look at things, they're looking at schools, we're looking at schools every year too. So this is things that people will bring up to us and we'll evaluate and we'll make plans and make sure that we follow through.
And annual fire inspections to the chief.
Right.
I like the idea of it being solved. Oh, no, go ahead, please.
Just to touch on, you know, the way emergency management kind of approaches things. You know, most, most emergency events are rapidly evolving, they're dynamic, they're tense situations. And so the information may constantly be changing. And so as we communicate and collaborate with our partners, we're gonna make a decision like ultimately, do we have the time, number one, to evacuate these campuses? Because they're not on an island. We have a vista, we have other neighboring areas. And so we have to factor all those things into, into the decision-making process. And ultimately, it is where are people going to be most safe? And if we push people out of a secured, contained area where they have water, they have resources, they have protection, is it better to keep them there because the fire is moving so swiftly or the emergency events happening so swiftly? That it's not really safe to move them into an unsecured area. And I think those factors always are brought to the table when we're making those decisions. And so I think it's, it's, you can't have a one size fits all approach to everything and anything. You have to take all the factors that are present. You have to use, you know, either lessons learned, things that you've prepared or planned for and use that kind of as your baseline. And then you have to make modifications and adjust accordingly so that you can fit the event as best you can.
Thank you. So let's, let's go with that kind of scenario. So if it was something where maybe it wasn't possible or practical to do an evacuation, how is it that a parent who may be part of an evacuation, who does have to leave the proximity of that school? How, how are we working with the parents to make sure that they understand the safety and security of their children? And then how to get them? Is it, you know, is it that plan that once it is safe and they're evacuated to that destination, I kept trying, sorry, I'm like brain blank, what you guys called it? Reunification, thank you. I'm like, I don't like that term, it makes me nervous. But yeah, like where parents can then like get with their children. And I'm sure at the beginning of a school year, everybody knows those locations per school. I mean, you wait until the time of an emergency to notify parents?
Well, we don't want parents showing up prior to our students arriving there. There's obviously some, we have time to set up. Plus, we also have to understand if it's a fire, right? Is the reunification location in that area, right? So that's why we have them all throughout Boulder County. And if we needed to switch and move out of Boulder County or Brimfield County, we could do that. That you had, there was a question about communication. So as Chris explained, when, when there's an event happening, we have an internal communication process, right? Our early awareness queues up our communication staff. They have scripted language or messaging that goes out or unscripted information that goes out of, here's the event. Here's what we're doing. This is the condition of the school, directions to parents, et cetera. And then the, the information as far as what their protocol is. We also have information about parental role and responsibility on our website, which is bvsd.org/beready, which provides information there as well. So during any type of standard response protocol, event evacuation lockdown, et cetera, there's immediate communication once we understand that the, the nature of the event and the condition of the school.
I just also would like to give you like really great kudos. I mean, that, the evaluation process that you have created to daily, constantly assess situations, environmental and otherwise, so that you are all prepared or emergency services prepared, is outstanding. I've never heard of that in, in other, in other areas where there's that kind of, you know, preparedness in place. And I'm hoping that hearing that, it makes me feel good that you guys are going to be really on top. You're not waiting to see if something's happening. You know everything before it's, like the second it's hit somewhere, not even in our area, you'll know and can, and can mobilize on that.
Yeah, and I just, I think it's, it shows awesome collaboration and partnership with our public safety partners, right? That they've allowed our security team to have interoperability on the state public safety radio network. So I don't have to wait for a call from the chief or one of his staff. When his officers are here and it gets dispatched, our staff's also hearing it. So we can start readying response to understanding what's going on, listening to the first responders, sizing up the event or identifying the location, conditions, et cetera, whether it is a train derailment or whether it is a fire or some other event that's occurring.
Last comment. I, I'm really hoping to, as Chief Wilson said, that as you continue to evaluate and kind of improve the, how this works and gain more confidence from parents who have children in BVSD, that you'll take their feedback and find ways to incorporate that in to help make them and their children. Because I think the kids also need to know that they're gonna be okay. You know, like a seven-year-old is probably gonna trust their teacher to tell them that seventeen-year-old might seem a little more convincing. So I'd like for them to also be ready to go and know that they can trust the instructions that they're getting just as their parents could. So thank you again. Thank you for being here and working together with everybody with the Boulder County Sheriff's Department and, you know, really make this happen. ODM has made leaps and bounds with all of you since the event two and a half years ago. So thank you.
Thanks. Deb would like to go next.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Protem. Yes, I will reiterate everything that Judy just mentioned and the public commenters. I think what you have accomplished already in your research and coordination with police and fire departments is spectacular. I'm also very happy to hear about the coordination with the extension of Campus Drive and Paradise Lane up at Monarch. I have a couple of questions. One is on the location or the contact for the, the parents of the BVSD students in case of any emergency. Do they have to be connected to Everbridge or BOCO? Or does the school itself have multiple contact locations? I'm wondering for myself, for my granddaughter, will you contact her mother, her father, her caregiver, her, and are they at work or are they at home or are they out shopping or wherever? How do you contact the parents or the person in charge of the children when something like that is happening? To let them know that there is an emergency and this is how we're going to handle it? That's my first question.
Thanks, Deb. So our parents who have children in BVSD are integrated into our Infinite Campus system. Our Infinite Campus sends out text messages, email and phone calls to the parents and students who are listed in Infinite Campus about their specific action. So we do not provide community information like Everbridge. That is for our first responding partners, the Office of Disaster Management, to message out community-wide information regarding impacts to the community. Our messaging are specific to the parents and guardians of those students and then the specific actions for those students that we are taking. Our Communications Department has also implemented this year a blog, for lack of a better term, how to describe it, where it has a link that goes to almost like BOCO alerts, where it has a link and it goes there and it gives a scrolling account of everything that's happening with that incident. So you can see updates in live time about what's occurring. But that'll have information about if we're evacuating, where we're reunifying to, our be ready site, so parents know what actions they should take specific to their student. We rely on our first responders and our 911 communication centers to push out the Everbridge notifications for greater community impacts and actions that they're advising to take on the community side. Does that answer your question?
That does answer my question. Thank you very much. Then my next question is, you, someone mentioned that you were getting current weather information. I'm wondering if you're connected to the NOAA Weather Station to get current and predicted weather conditions for the area?
So our dispatch center, I think at 24/7/365, and they have weather apps that they're watching constantly. The other great thing is we have, because of our interoperability, we're able to hear when an incident occurs. There's a lot of things that weren't integrated before Marshall Fire, like our interoperability, where now we can hear things that are happening and also be aware of red flag days. So we take a different posture with our transportation services now during red flag days to ensure that we can mobilize resources quickly.
Okay, I'm just mentioning that because the NOAA Weather Station has current and predictive current weather conditions based on all of the scientific research that they do 24/7. And they can tell you there is going to be high winds or there's going to be high temperatures or there's going to be rain or whatever. The other, the next question is about that. So we talked a lot about fires, understandably so, because of the Marshall Fire. But there are also other incidents that would affect the students in school, like floods, like tornadoes, but also gun violence. And is all of this integrated somehow into this alert system program?
So our standard response, I hope, I'm looking this way. I don't know if Deb actually sees me, so I don't know where to look.
I see your back.
Okay. So our standard response protocols allow for five actions that our school district takes from the I Love You Guys Foundation. It is an evacuation. So for something like, you know, maybe we have a hazmat incident and we need to evacuate the school or a fire and we need to evacuate a shelter in place. So if we have a large hailstorm or we have, you know, something that requires us to come in due to weather, we have a shelter in place. We have our secure drill, which is, hey, there's an outside threat, like a bear coming onto our campus and we need to bring the students in, which tends to happen a lot in Boulder. Our lockdown, which is for an active assailant inside the school. And then a hold, which we use mostly for medicals to get our paramedics into the school quicker so that we can help somebody who's experienced a medical issue. So all of those are provided to our students and parents at the beginning of the year to say, here are the actions that we would take for any incident. And we follow those protocols and those protocols can be together or they can be isolated alone depending on the incident. And then we accordingly take actions based off of those five protocols.
All right, thank you. So then my last comment is I think that what you've accomplished so far is amazing. I thank you for everything you have done and I encourage you to continue on and really emphasize the importance of letting the parents know exactly what's happening as soon as it's happening and what they should do in response. Thank you.
Thanks, Deb. Councilor Ann Linton.
Thank you. First of all, let me express my gratitude to the work that you do for BVSD and our first responders as well as in our community. I can't even begin to express how much we appreciate what you do, not only for our kids, but the community as a whole. I've seen a few times within the community, apart from Marshall Fire as well, where we have a bear on campus. We just had a gas leak near a school recently for construction. And it, response was activated very quickly to make sure our kids and the air in the schools were safe. So thank you for that. That leads into my first question, which is, you know, we talk a lot about communication during an event. There's a lot of construction that goes on as well near our schools. There's construction right now next to LES. There's construction with Marshall Fire rebuilds. We're gonna have Campus Drive as well. So help me to understand how the plans are evaluated. Is there communication ahead of time with Public Works Directors and such to make sure that if you need to change your evacuation plan, those plans are in place?
Yeah, we receive notification from Public Works or Traffic anytime they're gonna have road closure, lane closure, any kind of event or, you know, development that's gonna impact traffic flow. So they pass it on to the fire district, they pass it on to the police department. So there is awareness on that end. So we're, again, for response or for planning, we have that information.
Thank you. My second question, again, might be you to Chief. So many of our schools are embedded within neighborhoods and increasingly we're seeing more and more individuals work from home. So they're at home when practice drills happen and they hear the alarms. They see the first responders coming on site to go through the drill. Is there any method of communication to the community to alert them to the fact that it's not a drill or that it is a drill when these things happen?
Yeah, I'll defer that to the school district.
Sure you don't want to take that? So for our lockdown drills, our school administration sends a community letter out a week beforehand. We have a very trauma-informed response for our drills. So we allow the opportunity for people to say, hey, this might be really traumatizing for me. I don't want to participate. Or I might want to participate in a way that's not normally what our process is developed for. So we allow, send that message out to parents to allow them to do that. Now for our other protocols, like a evacuation, which is a fire drill we have to do by fire code every month, that is something that we just do. It's fire code. We send it out and say, hey, we're gonna do this evacuation drill as well as our shelter in place drill. So those aren't things we announce to our community. But you always have the option as a parent to say, I don't want my child to participate in this. We specifically send it out for our lockdown drills, though.
Okay, so thank you. I appreciate the information for the families that are in the school and the options to participate or opt out. My question is more focused on the, the surrounding neighbors who may or may not have children in that school, right? Increasingly working from home and the trauma that might be stirred up for them if they're not aware that there's a drill going on rather than an actual event in the area.
Yeah, so there's no formalized process. Occasionally, we will, you know, have a, have a conversation with somebody from the school district who passes on that information. Okay, we're doing a fire drill. We're doing an evacuation drill. And I guess we can't kind of keep that internal, like it's for our information, like we're aware of that just in case we do get calls to the dispatch center. But, you know, potentially that brings up a gap in terms of like, do we want to relay that information? And I don't know how the school district feels about like pushing out that information from the city communication? Or if that's something that, that would even, you know, interest them or, you know, are there, are there risks associated with that potentially? And so I don't know. I mean, we could certainly talk with the school district to see what that might look like. But we don't have a protocol in place like we do with Public Works, the traffic closures for notifying outside of the school itself.
Yeah, I'd be interested in learning more of that. I hear you on all the points you just brought up. Thinking to the comments from the community about how some of these things can be triggering, right? And there's a lot of trauma surrounding these events. I think I'd love to learn more. I hear you on it. It could impact negatively the drill. But yeah, go ahead, Chief.
Might have another comment. Is these kind of drills, we're not going to respond lights and sirens basically? Because that's how your neighborhood's going to find out if an incident's happening. We get lots of those kind of calls, hey, hey, what's going on? Because I just saw a fire truck or a police car going down the hill or going down the road with lights and siren. There must be an incident going on. So with these planned drills, most likely, we would participate, but we're not gonna respond emergent to it. Does that help?
Yeah, that does help.
Yedrick?
My questions have been answered, but thank you all for the excellent presentation. I really appreciate it.
Excellent. Yeah, just want to share in the, you know, thanks for all the, all the experts in the room. Kind of thank you for your, your role as one of the collaborators, helping us all connect all these, all these dots. You know, one, one of my first thoughts is just, you know, having faith in the experts. I, as a councilperson, I'm daily reminded that I'm not the expert in, in the topic. And so it's so wonderful to have so many people looking at this and looking at all these different alternatives and, and situations. I personally, I have kids in three different schools. So I've got an LES student, an LMS student, a Centaur student. And so I certainly am not, you know, acutely aware of the plans or what the plans would be for each one of those schools. And what I do is I put a lot of faith in you all, but mostly in the people in that building and the principals and the teachers and otherwise administrators in that building to do right by my child, right? And when something happens, I know, having been a teacher, I know that the teacher's not gonna run out the door and save themselves, right? They're, they're protectors of these children. And so are so many people that work there. So I have a saying with my teams, one bad idea is better than ten good ideas. And that always takes a little explaining. But the idea that, you know, when we all have ten different ideas that might all be really good ideas, we try to execute ten different ideas all at the same time, that can be That can be really counterproductive and one idea. And the trick is great if it's actually not a bad idea, but one idea that may not be as good as your idea, that everyone's executing. Will often have more success than than ten good different ideas. And so what I think there, what I I bring that up is the importance of what I'm hearing around the collaboration of. You guys all working together and having, you know, not a plan because that's impossible. You can't have. A plan for disasters or emergencies, but having plans. For communication with each other and communication with the community. And I think what you're hearing a lot from council. Is this need that our community has to be communicated with, right? That we really need to know what's going on. But I also wanna, you know. My, my sense is, you know, if my kid is taken care of and my kid is evacuated, my kid is taken to Longmont. And then an hour later, I find out that my kid is safe in Longmont with their classmates and their teacher. That's the most important thing. Um, that, that the, the plan was executed in a safe way. And then I will eventually be reunited with my kid who's safe. Uh, but we have a lot of parents who are going to want that information as quick as possible, get to that school themselves. Do those things that I can imagine the police and fire like, no, 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 no. You're doing it all wrong. But that's hard, right? Because we're, we're parents and we want, we want to come uh be heroes. So I think what I'm hearing a lot of it, I want to echo is. The need to communicate the best practices. For the kids in the schools, but also for the parents in how we, how we react to a emergency. Um, one of the hardest things I've ever done in my life was drive away from Louisville the day of the fire. Um, and when I asked, what is the number one best thing I can do for my community, they said. Follow our instructions, be a leader and do what we're asking people to do, which is leave. Like, no, I want like a badge and a helmet and I'm in and I left and right. And so understanding as a parent, coming to the school isn't. Isn't what's gonna help right now. Allowing the experts to clear the school to do these things is how you can be a hero right now. Is really hard for parents to understand in the moment. So getting that education over and over again of like, this is what we're asking of you. No matter what the emergency, we're asking to let the experts handle it and trust in that. And then, then you have a pretty big obligation to follow through. I understand you guys do fire drills and other drills. One of my first questions now is just. How do you prepare for the unknown? So for instance, I can imagine a lot of the evacuation plans, we'll just stick with Monarch High School, when the incident is on campus drive. But the school needs to be evacuated. Like, oh, I'm sure you've done thousands of concepts of what you do, but like. Well, the kid, you need to leave, but you can't take the road because that's where the fire is coming from or that's where the threat is coming from. And so it's like out to the fields, you know, so our teachers, I remember one time being uh uh in a drill as a teacher. We did the same drill every month, every month. And one time as we rounded the corner to the stairwell, we always go down. There's someone there like the fire's here, you can't come this way. And everyone's like, wait, what? And it was chaos. Chaos, because everyone's like, this is where we go when there's a fire. We've done it every month. And just one teacher being like, you can't go this way. This is the way the fire is. Ah, fire. Everyone's like. Why wait? And they didn't know where to go and it was chaotic. So are your drills designed to create that sort of. Unexpected moment where you're not actually gonna do what we always do. You're gonna do something different. And then explaining that, like, can you guys talk a little bit about how the drills? Happen and how they change and how, how you introduce unknowns to your practices for these children and teachers?
So our school safety advocates uh do tabletop scenarios with our administrators and all staff. And they, based off of incidents that are happening, say, hey, our tabletop scenario will be on. Uh, one they're working on this semester is an internet outage.
Can you, you're using jargon, tabletop.
A tabletop is where um we provide a scenario to our staff. And then ask them to make decisions based off what we're providing to them. And then we assess their decision-making skills. To say, does it align with process? Does it align with our procedures? Is it best practice? And so we have those uh low like uh non-fault environment discussions. So that our staff, be it teachers or administrators or custodians that are participating. All know that here is the the general consensus on decision-making for the scenario that we're dealing with. And so we provide these scenarios once a semester to say, what are your decision-making, what would your decision-making skills look like? If this were to come about today. One of them that we're dealing with this semester is a power outage, because we all dealt with that last semester. Of like, alright, you have no internet, you have no ability to do this. And now you have an emergency happen. How are we communicating? What methods of communication do we have uh when those things happen? And so. They are getting down to the decision-making skills. What we like to see is that our staff and students know the procedures. And so if we can follow procedures, they can adjust to the scenario, right? As Chief said, or I think you said, sir, like, there's not one plan for everything. But what we can do is hopefully drive decision-making to the best possible outcome with what the scenario is given. Um, we don't have specific people stopping people in the halls to your point for the fire drills. Um, but we do work. I mean, we have a lot of construction in our buildings all the time, like three of our high schools have bond work going on. And so they have, our teachers have to adapt to those scenarios based off of construction that is happening currently in the schools to say. Hey, this was our evacuation route, but this isn't our evacuation route anymore. Um, some of our schools are are very open and beautiful in architecture. But it doesn't lead to good options when we have an active shooter scenario. So we practice multiple different options. And you know, what, based off the incident that's occurring, they can select from any of those options to say, this is the best decision for me right now. I hope that answers your question.
It, it, it does. And if you could also just speak to the balance and how you guys approach that balance between preparedness and fear. You kind of alluded to a little bit that people can opt out, those kind of things. Um, you know, an active shooter example is one of those things that, yes, just talking about it can be traumatic. Painting the picture can be traumatic, but also we need to talk about it. We need to figure out like how to do it. So how do you guys? Strike tho- that balance of of the amount of preparation and and being honest about. Why they're doing what they're doing versus concern about their fear of and and trauma just in the test itself.
So it takes a community to provide education. So it's not just our staff alone, but our counselors, our teachers who are. Conducting the drills with our students to provide the appropriate age-based education. How we talk to kindergartners about. A drill, whether it be fire or an active assailant, it can be very different from high schoolers. Um, so we add, provide that education to our teachers and staff and say, how are you communicating it to your, to your students that best suits them? Um, and so that's kind of the trauma-informed work that we do to say, hey, we're gonna have this drill. You need to do these actions, right? If we're talking to a high schooler, our actions might be on self-evacuation, right? It's an open campus during lunch. If you were to have an incident during lunch, what things would you do? You know, please don't come back in and have those discussions with our students. If we're talking about first graders, we're gonna say. Hey, you need to, if you're near a trusted adult, you need to follow the instructions of the adult. We don't expect our first graders to understand those decision-making skills. So. Um, our, we provide that education to our staff and to our teachers and to our administrators. And then ask them to push out it appropriately to their age base soon. So.
Thank you. I mean, so I have anything else come up for anybody's run through? Great. Well, we'll wrap this up. Oh, sorry, Deb. I see your hand is up. Is it a new hand?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Well, you can, thank Meredith. I missed you entire.
Thanks, Meredith. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to comment that. My question about informing the parents wasn't about the actual incident as it's occurring. But informing them now about what your plans are for addressing whatever might happen in the future. So that they know that you're planning for it and you have a process in place. And they know that whatever information they get is based on. Lots of research and lots of experience doing this kind of thing. So they know what to do and they believe you when you tell them.
Uh, Councilman Curran's made a good point. It's part of what we're doing tonight, right? Um, and and trying to get this information out in many different ways. Um, and I think that's, you know, maybe why I started with uh Kiana as well is that. This is, this is so, we have the school district here and we have our fire and we have our police and we have our city and we have ourselves. And so, you know, how we get these things, this information out and keep repeating the same messages. But you know, I think one of that main messages I'm hearing is follow the instructions, whatever those instructions are, right? And so to that, um, you know, person who chimed in earlier and then maybe the example that uh. Uh, Tanya gave about someone else she had a conversation with is like, that's kind of our natural instinct is to do everything we can as an individual. And knowing what it is we should do, um, but then being able to trust that. And that's hard if you don't have that trust. If you've lost that trust, if you don't believe that, even just because of a story three states away. If you've lost faith because of something that's happening somewhere else, I know I'm gonna make a difference, right? And so that, that can be hard when you have a hundred heroes um that aren't in uniform trying to be heroes. So. Um, yeah, I appreciate those, those comments. And I, and just to wrap up again, I, I appreciate all of you for uh being here and for the. I can't even imagine the countless hours that go into where we got. Today and I, and I forgot I wrote, wrote one other thing down. I thought it was so interesting that you might want to, as you're going this. Through this with other people in other uh municipalities. Talking more about those differences of what has changed, because the presentation was amazing, but I didn't hear a lot about. Cause I think it's like, we didn't used to do that at all. But knowing what has changed is really valuable. Like, we didn't do this and now we do. Um, versus I just, well, you always did that, right? So I think that's, that's a good thing, just to keep adding to your presentation and the communication of what has changed for the better. Um, and that can be, like, like I said, can be difficult, but thanks, everybody. Um, okay, well, that wraps up that item. Um, our next item for discussion direction is traffic safety. Uh, specifically bicycles and e-bikes update. And we have a presentation from our chief of police, who I know has been also working with Boulder Valley, Boulder Valley School District. So thanks for your work on this issue too. Chief, oh, when you're ready. Alright, we are back and ready for your presentation. Thanks, Chief.
Alright, Mayor Pro Tim Council, thanks again. I'm here this evening to present you with some updates and responses to questions. That you posed at a previously held special meeting on May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, where traffic safety related to bicycles and e-bikes was discussed. Uh, here tonight with crime prevention specialist Scott Moore, uh, senior ranger naturalist Benjamin White-Paterino. And uh, obviously a staff to to kind of provide some of those updates. After the meeting in May, the police department representative, city communications department. Um, and staff from Parks Recreation and Open Space worked collaboratively to create and distribute educational material. Uh, and work with local bicycle shops to help our community navigate what really has seemed to become a complex topic. Um, and really to encourage um safe riding habits. Uh, we have engaged in several outreach uh events that have occurred throughout the city. And the city organization and its staff has spent many hours focusing on this topic. Uh, the ultimate goal is to create a safe environment where riders, pedestrians and motorists can travel throughout the community. Um, the slideshow, I'm gonna represent some of the, the responses to the questions that were posed. So we did review accident report data that involved injury. Um, between May twenty-nineteen and May twenty-twenty-four, so about five years worth of data. There was about fourteen-hundred-and-eighty-five total traffic accidents that occurred between that time period. So the question was asked of, of those individuals that were involved in the accidents. Um, how many of those accidents involved a bicycle? And of the bicyclists, how many might have been under the age of eighteen? And so we were able to go through the data once again. We had eighteen bicyclists that were under the age of eighteen that were involved in the forty-one accidents. Um, and of those eighteen, um, five were, were, five had sustained serious bodily injury or serious injury during the event. I'm sorry, let me go back. There were eighteen bicyclists that were under the age of eighteen um in total. And of those eighteen bicyclists, five of them were, were sustaining injury, one which was under the age of eighteen. Uh, there were no fatal accidents involving bicyclists during that time period. Uh, we then looked at the pedestrian accidents. Um, there were three pedestrians that were under the age of eighteen. Uh, one being under the age of eighteen that sustained serious injury. Um, there were no fatalities, two fatalities of pedestrians and one was um under the age of eighteen. So sorry for that confusing slide. Uh, we were also asked to look at feedback from other cities about what they're doing, how they're approached to e-bike safety um is managed. Um, so we did reach out to neighboring police jurisdictions that included Erie, Lafayette, Brumfield and Boulder PD. Uh, to see how they were regulating e-bikes, what specific city ordinances they may have had. Um, and all those agencies replied by saying that they defer back to the state traffic code. So nobody has any real specific e-bike-related ordinances um that re- that relate to the operation of the e-bikes. Um, and so we, we reached out to other communities and jurisdictions. And realistically, we only found one other jurisdiction that had any additional restrictions. Um, and that was Steamboat Springs. They do have a municipal code. It's a helmet ordinance in which they require anybody fifteen years of age or younger. To have a protective bike helmet, um, whether they're an operator or passenger on a bicycle or electric-assisted bicycle. So there's not a lot of, uh, there's not a lot of current ordinances specific to municipalities. Um, that deal with any kind of restrictions for e-bikes other than really what's in the state code. We were also asked about the Louisville PD enforcement processes if we were to issue a citation or contact with a. A person under the age of eighteen for an e-bike-related violation. Um, so we do currently have processes in place in which we can notify a parent or guardian whenever a summons is issued to a juvenile. So that's already standard practice and standard procedure. Um, a verbal warning or educational contact, officers are still required to provide a business card. Uh, to anybody that they're in contact with. That's per state law. Um, and so they're doing that whenever a citation is not issued. Um, they're issuing or handing out a business card with information on who they are. And how to reach the police department with any compliments or complaints about the contact. So that process could continue. Um, we discussed internally that, you know, we could potentially ask for the juvenile to have. Their parent contact or their guardian contact, the police department, so that we can inform them of the contact, let them know the nature of the conversation. Um, and provide that educational opportunity. So that process could be in place. One thing that we found potentially could be problematic is if we required officers to do follow-up activity on. Every juvenile that they contacted where a citation wasn't issued. So that could lead to kind of a two-pronged approach in which they're issuing a summons. So that way they've already fulfilled the, the, the need to advise a parent or they don't make the contact. And we don't want this, the latter one to happen. So. Um, again, it's something that could be in place, but we're also looking at it from a capacity and a time draw on the officer's time. Um, our system does allow for a formal written capability, so we can actually issue a formal written um warning to a violator. And so with that, we could actually incorporate a process where we are requiring the officers to, to have a parent or guardian. Uh, get in touch with us after the contact is, is concluded. And more often than not, what we're gonna try to do is, is actually reach the parent or guardian either by phone or transporting the child home. Um, to let them know that, hey, we're releasing them on a, on a written warning. Here is a warning, doesn't require court appearance. Um, but we can certainly uh address the, the behavioral issue with that formal warning process as well. Like I mentioned, we do need to be cognizant of the time burger required for officer follow-up. Um, because again, it's, it's other traffic contacts, it's answering calls for service, it's doing case investigation, doing follow-up work, doing court time. So we have to try to figure out where we balance that, that time draw. Um, and again, I think the ultimate goal is to try to educate the, the juvenile, the child riding. Um, and their parent or any other writer that we, we may come in contact with. Um, as I mentioned before, on May twenty-eighth, uh, the education is preferred over enforcement. For initial contacts and for potentially minor violations. I will tell you that since we've had the, the meeting in May. Um, officers and supervisors are letting me know when they contact somebody on an e-bike. And we have issued citations for, for dangerous riding behavior, uh, two people under the age of eighteen since we've had that meeting. Um, so it, it is happening. And again, officers are using good discretion in terms of. When to issue and and potentially when to use it as an educational opportunity. Uh, but like I mentioned, education is gonna be kind of our, our focus, uh, but enforcement is always gonna be on the table as an option. Um, we've engaged in a lot of different proactive community outreach events um throughout the summer. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to Benjamin here so he can kind of touch on some of the campaigns and the uh. The actions that they've taken throughout the summer on trail etiquette. So, Ben.
Good evening, everybody. Um, so when we talked last, we were on the verge of launching our trail etiquette campaign that we had. And then the police department, Parks and Open Space, we've kind of been communicating through different channels, topics related to trail etiquette. So um, social media channels and the website, there's bulletins that are published at the time of the year. Scott partnered with EVSD, I know, for different uh back-to-school events. They put together packets that included safety materials to be distributed. We also tried to find large events where we could fold in trail etiquette conversations. So Touch a Truck was a pretty successful event. Bike to Work Day, we had materials set out, basically took all the stuff that you were issued out at the last meeting. We discussed this so that people could interact with rangers and uh our crime prevention specialists and have those kinds of conversations and kind of a fun environment. Uh, we also distributed some of those same materials to uh to bicycle retailers in the city with uh sort of a request to ask for more when they ran out of them. And so far as when I followed up, uh, it sounds like the feedback from people looking at them or whatever when they're browsing inventory has been positive. And we've kind of been, you know, anyone who does enforcement knows in your patrol world, you have these sort of impromptu educational contacts that you make. Where people will come and they'll have issues to talk to you about like bike safety, like trail etiquette. So we've kind of been trying to fold in a lot more actively that topic whenever it comes up in those sort of impromptu situations. So in terms of, um, well, that is interesting. It's the same thing that happened with the VSD folks. Okay, so in terms of of the results in the trail etiquette booth, we held about thirteen booths and we reported about five hundred community members engaging with them. And we intend to continue outreach in sort of more an informal sense to the different groups. And this is again, following um sort of a multi-agency research that was undertaken by City of Boulder, a CPW that's Colorado Parks and Wildlife, which is the state's. Sort of Parks and Open Space equivalent program. And then Jefferson County basically looking at how to create a campaign that doesn't demonize anyone or anyone's equipment, but talks to everyone about behavior and turns it into a thing that we collectively own. Trail safety and trail etiquette. Um, so we're continuing to do that and trying to have constructive conversations when they come up on the trail or when we have opportunities to bring them up at our other education programs. Our trail booths, we targeted areas specifically that were really high traffic or where we know that there's a lot of through traffic. From bicycles, which are also areas that we previously uh enhanced over the course of last fall with the addition of slowdown signs. Been on the trail, you've probably seen them at kind of key intersections that we've added in, especially in trails where we know there's. Sort of physical problems of line of sight restrictions because of curves or where we know there's really high traffic. Meanwhile, we've kind of continued to be exploring where we might place more of these materials and in kind of public facing areas. So the library comes to mind, the recreation center. And uh with the police department, we're looking into a bicycle rodeo next year, which is kind of a big fun event. Trying to time that also with when we can uh maybe bring in some different organizations that are active in our communities. Avid for Adventure is a really great sort of summer adventure organization, um who've been really great. Use permit holders on open space. They do kayaking on Harper Lake. You probably see them out there all summer. They also do um bicycle education um on Davidson Mesa, and so that might be an organization. They're very interested in being part of it, so um, once we sort of start moving in the direction of having a specific date and kind of marshaling resources. We're establishing some of those community relationships so that we can make what'll be kind of a big lift and have a good event for everyone to attend, so. That'll hand it back to Chief Gutierrez.
Yeah, I do just want to highlight the fact that we, you know, we've worked with local retailers um that have really kind of helped support this. They they provided some education to staff, um, and they've really taken on a willingness to try and educate consumers um at the front end so that people are purchasing. The appropriate type of equipment and and I really do appreciate their their willingness to partner with us. Uh, some other things that we've done really quickly is uh we've enhanced some community messaging um through social media channels. Scott uh Scott Moore has helped uh Grace Johnson with their communications department create um an informational flyer. And I know that there's some out in the lobby area there for people to take, but really to try to explain, you know, the differences between a class one, class two, class three e-bike. A low-power scooter, a motorcycle, what the requirements are for all of that. And like I mentioned, this is a really complex, complex topic because there are so many variables to what an e-bike could be. Or may not be based on on the definition by the state. And I think that some of the informational um material that we've created tries to clarify some of those points, just again, to educate people. From, you know, purchasing maybe an inappropriate type of equipment uh for somebody that that may be, you know, too young to understand the dynamics of it. But um, again, we're going to continue to do that with the campaign. Um, and again, any community event, we have that information available and ready. So as was mentioned in the the meeting in May, you know, there were some concerns about other retails, uh retailers, like if purchasing it online or maybe there isn't. Quite the educational component. People are doing searches, they're finding something on a website and saying, hey, that looks like it's a good price. It has a really good capability. I'm going to go ahead and buy that. Um, and they don't know the nuances that kind of come into play with it. So when we looked at that, we really distinguished that there were actually additional classifications for these types of motor-driven bicycles. So you have obviously a bicycle that's pedal-driven, you have class one, class two, class three e-bikes. Which have a a motor size that really is no greater than seven hundred and fifty watts. And that that actually caps, you know, the speed capabilities and things like that. When we look anything beyond seven hundred and fifty watts, it actually falls into a qual- uh category of a low-powered scooter. So you can almost equate that with a moped or similar type conveyance. But there are, you know, there are e-bikes that are being sold with greater than seven hundred and fifty watts that are being being marketed as e-bikes. But if they're if they're bigger than seven hundred and fifty watts, they're actually required to get state registration. The state requires, um, it's a decal and you can see it up there on the on the slide, um, designating that that conveyance as a low-powered scooter. That registration is valid for three years, but conditional to that registration, the operator has to be like a licensed driver and they have to have insurance. And so there are those additional requirements that many people aren't aware of. So if you buy a one thousand watt e-bike, you actually are are going to be obligated to follow the provisions that are established in the state law for the registration, the licensing and the insurance. That classification is not, is only allowed on roadways and it's not allowed on sidewalks, trails or paths. Um, a lot of the reason because those capabilities, the speed capabilities are fifty miles an hour-ish. Um, and so that that creates a hazard for people. Um, anything above, uh, what is it, forty-six hundred watts or so? Is classified as a motorcycle. And so a motorcycle then has to have lighting equipment, turn signals, it has to be registered with the state, has to have a license plate. The operator has to be endorsed for motorcycle uh usage. Um, and so it has all those provisions that actually apply to a motor vehicle. Um, and certainly motorcycles are a little bit easier to distinguish just because of the size and and again, all the safety equipment that that's inherent on those types of vehicles. But again, those those are also not allowed on trails or sidewalks or things of that nature. Um, there is a classification of an off-highway vehicle. Um, those are not allowed on roadways. Um, the state does require an off-highway vehicle registration for it um to go off-roading essentially. So in the mountain trails, park trails that allow for vehicles to to operate on them, they're required to have the off-highway vehicle registration and that is an annual registration. So the violation for any of these provisions can range from a traffic misdemeanor all the way down to a class B traffic infraction. Um, so class A, class B traffic infractions are low, lower level traffic violations. A traffic misdemeanor carries a more significant punishment. So, you know, long, non-licensed driver is actually a traffic misdemeanor um for a second offense or beyond. And so again, trying to educate the community that if you have a a an e-bike that is over a hundred, seven hundred and fifty watts. And you don't have a driver's license, that you're potentially uh committing a traffic misdemeanor. So again, it's part of that educational component that we're really trying to to push forward. So hopefully that that clarifies some of the classifications that we talked about um last time. Um, it's not on this slide specifically, but we did do some BVSD engagement. Scott and and Grace did a really good job of creating informational items that actually were sent to the school district to be placed into back-to-school packets. Again, trying to focus on the group that we we recognize is likely creating that the biggest issue are the middle schoolers, the elementary schoolers. Who don't really understand the rules of the roadway. Licensed drivers, they have a better idea of how to operate and navigate on a roadway. But recognizing that our target audience is probably elementary school and middle school, um, we worked with the school district to get that information out there. So I think that was a really positive way and we talked about collaboration in the previous presentation. But again, a really good example of reaching out to our partners and being able to to try to find a solution to to the issues. Um, so so the next steps are really, you know, this, the council can consider some registration requirements. Um, if you, if you'd like to have e-bikes with a separate registration, um, class one, class two, class three, that's a consideration. Uh, no other jurisdictions have that requirement. We can create other local regulations such as helmet laws or other restrictions to uh behavior, performance um and riding um throughout the community. Uh, there are engineering options, so signage could be helpful. Um, Boulder and Lafayette, they both have uh restrictions on speed limits on their trails. And so they do have posted si- uh speed limit signs and things of that nature to educate the 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 public as they're moving through those pathways. Boulder does a really good job with posting dismount zones. Um, our business districts in Louisville require you to dismount. You're not allowed to ride a a bicycle on any sidewalk within a business district in Louisville. Uh, but we don't have that signage. And so again, educational part of it is letting people know, hey, this is not the behavior that you can do here. And it's not that they're being malicious, it's just that they don't know and they're not aware. So um, some of some of those are considerations as well. I think the engineering part is probably going to be the most expensive if we're talking about like lane configurations or creating separate, you know, bicycle areas or things like that, curbing and such. Those those could ob- obviously become costly. Um, our focus right now has has been the educational part of it, uh coupled with with some enforcement when necessary and then of course the community engagement. Um, so any other options from from council? I mean, this is, this is really your opportunity to provide us with additional direction, provide additional feedback um on on what you would like to see next. So with that, I will conclude my presentation.
Thank you so much, Chief. So we're gonna, we don't have a ton of public, but the plan is uh we'll start with council questions. So specifically if you have questions for Chief uh or anyone else um about the presentation. And then we'll go to public comment and then we'll come back and have a more thorough discussion about, uh, yeah, comments about what we might want to be moving forward. So questions, Tietrick?
Yeah, just um, just one question, going back to the accident data slide. Of the fourteen hundred eighty-five total, am I right to assume that all of those involved a car? Even, you know, it, are are there any accidents that are a bike hitting a pedestrian or two bikes hitting each other?
Uh, that's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. When we looked at the fourteen hundred and eighty-five total accidents, those were reported accidents. And when we did the data search, um, we looked at accidents involving pedestrians, accidents involving bicyclists. So at least one of the traffic units was a bicycle or pedestrian. But I don't have the information as to whether it was bicycle versus bicycle or or other than that.
Got it. Thank you.
Building on that, do you know if in recent years, as as the e-bikes have become a little bit more popular out there, so maybe just this year and last. Are any of these specific bike incidents involving e-bikes, not just a regular pedal bike?
Yeah, that that question was asked previously. We don't have it noted in those accident reports. There's no specific area to be able to distinguish bicycle from e-bike. And as per the state, they they classify e-bikes and bicyclists essentially the same. So we don't, we don't have any distinction or way to go back through that data to say, okay, this this accident here involved an e-bike or a bicycle.
Would that be helpful?
Not necessarily, because I I feel like we're still looking at the bicycle as being the traffic unit. So whether it's a bicycle or an e-bike, um, it to to us, the accident still occurred and we're going to look at causation. What was the approximate cause of that accident? And then look at it from either engineering enforcement um or education from from that perspective. So I don't know that to to get down to that granular level of this was an e-bike versus a bicycle is helpful at this point. If if it's something that we're interested in doing, I mean, certainly we can make a notation. And like I mentioned, uh, the police supervisors, when they provide me with an end-of-shift summary, um, they've noted like an e-bike incident because they know this is a topic of concern. So it could be potentially an internal process where we say, okay, bicycle, e-bike, and then we make a a small distinction or note either in the narrative of the report, so then it can be pulled out.
As a member of Fiddy?
Thank you. Yes, um, I'm guess, I have a couple of questions. One, I know that regular bikes are allowed to coast through stop signs or stoplights. Are e-bikes also allowed to do that?
Yeah, class one, two or three e-bikes, um, they follow what's called the Colorado stop, um, just like a bicycle. And it was called California at some point, but Colorado adopted it, so it's now we refer to it as a Colorado stop. And what it requires a bicyclist to do is as they're approaching an intersection that's controlled with a stop sign. Is as they're approaching, they don't have to stop if there is no other opposing traffic. So they slow and they can proceed through the the stop, the posted stop sign um freely. At a stop light, they are required to stop, check, and then they can proceed through if there's no other opposing traffic.
Okay, and then also are the e-bikes uh required to follow the speed limits posted for automobiles?
Yes, any any vehicle that's on our public roadway is required to follow the the speed limit, the posted speed limit.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else might have a question? Barbara?
Thank you. My question came up after Councilmember Fahy asked her, so regarding the Colorado stop law. You know, the um, is that part of the education that's happening in the community specifically with those individuals who do not have driver's license yet? The difference, what exactly the Colorado stop law means? Because it isn't necessarily interpreted the same maybe by younger folks.
So, yeah, that has not been part of our our material that we've created and you can correct me if I'm wrong. What we've, what we focused on is the general classification of e-bikes um and then proper riding etiquette. I don't know that we've gone specific to the Colorado stop per se, um, but that's something that we can certainly put into the communication.
Yeah, I wonder if it wouldn't be some food for thought. I think we've all seen at some point, um, individuals blowing through stop signs rather than rolling up to check the intersection first, right?
Yeah, and that and that that was implemented just a few years ago, so it's relatively new to a lot of people. And and again, it used to be that bicyclists in all traffic had to stop completely at a stop sign and then at a red light, stop and then wait for the green signal. And that's recently changed, so it is an educational part and we can certainly include it.
Thank you so much. Yeah.
Um, so one of the things specifically with um programs where we had booths in the areas with a lot of kids that we focused on. Was addressing um anytime vehicles and bicyclists or pedestrians are going to come into interaction with each other. So we did sort of like a scenarios playing thing with kids, talking about, hey, you come to an intersection on your bike or you come to it on foot, what do you do? How do you know they're they're stopping? And usually the response we get is something like, oh, well, they're slowing down. We're like, well, they could just be like surfing on Amazon or whatever on their phones. So we did try to incorporate to that point, stuff related to kids about what they should be doing when they come to stop signs or what they should be doing when they come to crosswalks. To try to put it on that level, we didn't necessarily invoke that law specifically to try to not make it excessively complicated in like the three or four minutes where we can have a conversation with someone. But that point specifically about stopping and and establishing communication with vehicles was featured pretty heavily in terms of our conversations with kids.
It's really helpful to know. Thank you. And I think it's a great opportunity to maybe expand further. It looks like you have some comments.
So we also uh took the opportunity to educate quite a bit on crosswalk use and and walking pedestrian um to to schools this year. We also had the opportunity for officers to meet with community groups to have those conversations on safe travel to school. So that wasn't addressed specifically, but we did address some of those issues of how you cross streets and how you navigate those ways to school safely.
Thank you so much and thank you for all the great work that you continue to do on this topic.
Any other questions from council for a turn over to the public? Okay, um, are there any? Great, so um, just a reminder again, uh, as part of the public comment, you have three minutes to comment on this item and you can have up to six minutes if you want to pull your time with someone else. And if you can just tell us your name and whether you're a Louisville resident, that'd be great.
First up is Ethan Hunter, followed by Robert Zampino.
Hi, Oregon. Cool. Uh, so hi, um, my name is Ethan Hunter. I live in Ward One. Um, I've been here before. I I recognize that we're kind of early in these discussions and that they're ongoing. But I I hope that means there's time that we can reframe them a little bit. While I believe that the concerns about e-bikes are coming from a place of legitimate concern for children's safety, I'm worried that this conversation is becoming miss-focused. And the presentation we've just I'm worried that this conversation is becoming misfocused. In the presentation we've just seen, there's been a missing statistic, and I was super happy to see it called out during council's questions, the number of accidents that don't involve a car. And more specifically, the number of pedestrians that were injured by cyclists. I think if we all had to guess, we'd guess it's zero. So why are we so focused on bikes? Children on bikes are not what makes the streets dangerous. A distracted cyclist has never killed a driver. The inverse isn't true. In Louisville, we've seen two fatal collisions since twenty nineteen, and in both cases, it was a pedestrian struck by a car. We have to improve traffic safety, but we can't do that by regulating cycling. Let's not put up barriers that make cycling more difficult. E-bikes are an essential transportation tool for many people, especially children who can't drive. One of the wonderful things about Louisville is walking down the street on a beautiful summer day, seeing the the birds chirping, hearing conversations, and watching children cycle by and play in the streets. Let's keep that. I'm very happy to see that the staff's documents point out the significance of infrastructure improvements, because safety education is good, it's important, but it won't make streets that create dangerous situations safer. And we want our streets to be useful for children, and that means they have to be easy to use for children. We can't legitimately pretend that a pedestrian collision would have been avoided if they had just known to look both ways. They know. And we can't pretend that a kid on a bike and a pedestrian wouldn't have an unfortunate close call if we had just, if the kid had just known to not ride on the sidewalk when the only alternative is a painted bike lane on a road with a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit. The only path towards safer streets is safer infrastructure. Building safe, easy-to-use, and dedicated places for cyclists and pedestrians will reduce potential deadly conflicts, and it will reduce the sometimes uncomfortable conflicts between cyclists and cars. I urge city council to move towards a plan for sustainable street safety and reframe this discussion to focus on how the city can build infrastructure which is safe and useful for everyone of all ages. Thanks.
Next up is Robert Zampino, followed by Lucas Melcar- Melgand.
Hi, microphone activated. Hi, uh I'm Robert Zampino. Uh I live on Adams Avenue. Um this is a great conversation, and I know, you know, a lot of people raised concern at the previous meeting about this. Um and I think a really important thing to consider, as you know, was pointed out, is about how much of this problem is between bikes and pedestrians, and how much of the problem is involving cars. I think a lot of people um have been able to, you know, kids around Louisville have been able to take the e-bike and travel on their own and navigate the city, and and they're experiencing this new experience and learning about it, and we have these great programs to teach them. But if if those if those kids were not able to ride e-bike, if we put up barriers to that, that's just going to drive them to wanting to be in a car and drive sooner. And I think all of us have seen horrible stories about groups of teenagers in SUVs on the highway. Like, that's not what the thing that we want to be driving people towards. I think students on e-bikes getting to school is like a great thing and something that we should want to support. And we want to make the infrastructure there to support it. There's, you know, we've talked about places of high traffic, or we've had the booth set up to those. Maybe we can look at improving the infrastructure in those specific areas. Like, i- if people are using e-bikes on the trails, we want to make that easier and safer, and we don't want to drive them to being in a car, because every every kid in any bike is a kid not in a car, not creating these dangerous situations that the traffic statistics show are the cause of most of the danger. Thank you.
Lucas Melgand?
Howdy. Uh to start, I want to speak about class three e-bikes. Um a lot of people like to view them as being more dangerous than a class one or class two. Um from my perspective, as uh off your officer Gutierrez has pointed out, is a lot of the bikes that people are like fearing nowadays, that the the kids are riding are now are are considered the low-powered mobility scooters. Um anything above seven hundred fifty watts, those are going to be what's I'd consider not a bicycle. They're they're right now kind of sold as a bicycle, and all these kids are riding around on them, using the bike trails, et cetera. And then uh from my perspective, a class three from, I'm 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 the sales manager at e-bike Colorado, I probably should have mentioned that first, but uh from my perspective, class three bikes, they're all the same in the sense of they they ride just like a class one bike, but you can just get up to a slightly higher speed. And uh with that being said, it's there's no throttle, there's no anything like that that way would make it more similar to a motorcycle. Uh I myself as well have been cycling for ever since I I can remember. I I ride on my regular bikes past twenty miles per hour all the time. In fact, most of my road biking and gravel biking, I'm continually past twenty miles per hour. I don't know if it's necessarily like a speed issue uh for for class three bikes. Additionally, in in terms of safety, uh the gentleman in the blue shirt brought up a lot of great points that the infrastructure is really the key to creating a more safe environment. And additionally, just getting honestly used to bikes, because bikes, the the popularity has just risen, especially with e-bikes, it's getting a lot more people on bikes that haven't been capable of riding uh the the older folks, and uh gives the kids a easier way to commute to school. I think in a lot of other uh cities, counties, et cetera, they're going to be like Boulder, for example, there's so many more bikes on the road, people are used to them. And and I think that is just a change that people need to more or less adapt to. It's almost, from my experience, just riding a regular bike, it's it's just as dangerous as as an e-bike. Uh and it's not from other cyclists or pedestrians, it's really the cars that are on their phone when you're when you're on the yeah cycling path. But yeah, that's all I got. Thank you.
Next up is Randy Karanti. I apologize, and he is pulling and he is pulling time with um Kevin Berry.
Is Kevin Berry here online?
He was here, but he had to, he had to leave.
I will allow it. So close to not go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. I'll try to keep it under that. But I am the owner of e-bike Colorado. My name's Randy Karanti. And um I've been in business now here in Louisville with e-bike Colorado since July seventeen, July of two thousand seventeen, July first. And we've seen a lot of changes, we've seen a lot of things happening. And I can remember in the very beginning, when I first got into the business, there was all kinds of talk about e-bikes. It wasn't quite the talk about the kids riding e-bikes, but just e-bikes in general. The city of Louisville wanted to follow the Jefferson County. So Jefferson County, that's who we were following, because they did most of the research or whatever that reason were. Those people, most of the people that were supportive of that aren't even with the city anymore. Doesn't matter, it was, they had a guidelines, okay? Until Jefferson County said, class three are allowed to go on the trails. Oh, no, not Jefferson County anymore. Can't follow those guys any longer. Lucas made a really good point. Gentleman, I can't, in the blue shirt besides me, he also made a good point. They're a great way to commute. It's a twenty mile an hour bike that you have to pedal to get it to that speed, just like a class one is. It's a twenty mile an hour bike, but you have to pedal it. There's no throttle, there's no nothing. I see all the time, and I have class two bikes. That does have a throttle. Throttle bad. That's not true. It's just not a true statement. There's people with disabilities can really utilize that throttle. They can give it a little bit of boost, they can, they can get themselves going at a stop sign if they're stopped on a hill, whether they have a disability or not, or if they're just the aging community, like some of us that are speaking. We sometimes like that, because it's safe. It's safer for them. So I just wanted to, and I wanted to bring up something with the with the the young men that were at the last meeting. Those kids, those young men were phenomenal. They, there was about seven or eight of them in the first, in the sat in that meeting, several of them got up to testify. I went out with them afterwards to try to buy them pizza, and uh nobody would, nobody would sell pizza. It was eight fifty in downtown Louisville. When I was growing up here in Louisville, Louisville didn't close down at nine o'clock even, but now it does. Um these kids were so, there was some confusion. Ride your bike on the sidewalk. The next day, they get pulled over by another police officer. Ride your bikes on the street. They were just saying, please help us understand. Come to find out, there were about another eight or ten kids out there sitting, waiting, but they didn't know they could come in, because they were afraid they were going to interrupt the meeting, and they didn't feel that they could do that. Had I known that, I would have gone out there and hauled those guys in too. Because they were just, there might be a handful of kids, there always is. But I think as adults, we're all forgetting about what it's like to be a teenager again. I don't. My wife still thinks I'm a teenager. And I think kids need to be able to to enjoy. There's nothing for for kids to do, and if riding a bike, and if it's an e-bike or a regular bike. Lucas made a point. A regular bike, I had more encounters with regular cyclists in a much dangerous situation, riding three abreast on a trail, forty of them, and coming the other way. And I literally, my wife and I literally went into the ditch so that we didn't get run over by them, and they were coming well over twenty miles an hour, well over twenty miles an hour. And they were just, I'm not kidding you, it was a big group, they were all in their spandex and lycra, and they had everything. It was, they were all decked out. Let's see here. I'm glad that it was brought up about the accidents, because I was getting the impression, or that these accidents that have been had, that was presented tonight, were all caused by some kind of a cyclist or an e-bike. We promote in our store and have been from the beginning, and we will continue until some law tells me I can't. An e-bike is still a bicycle. That's what it is. We talk about it every day to our customers. And once somebody starts riding one, I don't know how many people are are are, I don't know how many people have been in trying an e-bike. If you haven't tried an e-bike, come down and try one. Just try it. That's our, that's our tagline. Just try it. And you're going to be surprised how they assist you. It's not a motorcycle. Um some of them are more powerful than others. These kids, all these kids that are riding these bikes, we don't even sell that style bike. I won't sell that style bike. But we want to educate them. We've been asked, and we want to help educate them. We want to have pizzas and sodas and at our shop, we want to go to the schools, we want to get involved with the with the police department, with any of any um citizens group that wants to do it. We want, we want to be a part of it. It's our business. We're the largest e-bike dealer in the entire state of Colorado. So that being said, we have very knowledgeable people. Uh that is a little bit of a plug, but it is, it's true. Um so um I'm not trying to plug e-bike Colorado, I'm just saying that we as the industry, we want to be, we want to be a part of it. Helmets and that type of thing, we've talked to kids with helmets hanging on their handlebars riding, and they go, oh, we didn't want to get caught. We have to wear one, because my mom and dad make us wear it. I'm done, I guess. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, let's back to council for uh comments. Again, I I'd like to just frame the conversation, let you guys take the conversation, but um you know, this is an opportunity for direction, so it's not just informational, but a chance for us to, you know, let staff know what we're um, you know, hoping that that they do with their time and energy and resources on this issue. So um if you can think about how your comments lead us in that direction for some clear direction for staff. We'd like to go first. I don't see Deb, if anyone wants to throw her back on the screen. Is she, is she off? Oh, there's a, up, there, up. Okay, so I see you now. Uh did you guys, Anna? Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, and thanks for all the additional information. Um it it seems to me that we're largely on the right track um in terms of prioritizing education. I agree with many of the public commenters that prioritizing the engineering piece is also important, but um recognize that it's uh quite costly and will be slow as compared to the the education piece. The the third E, the enforcement piece, you know, I think we're on the right track there as well in terms of mostly doing warnings, not not doing a lot of formal citations. The the one place where maybe I would make an exception is if there are sort of blatant violations involving the low-power scooters or the OHVs, or stuff that just clearly isn't an e-bike. It's it's not a case where somebody thought they had bought an e-bike on Amazon, and actually it's eight hundred fifty watts and not seven, I somebody who's going, right, we get these reports of thirty-five, forty-five, fifty-five miles an hour on a bike. I don't know how true those are, but if that's the case, if somebody's with a motor going forty miles an hour on a bike path, I would hope that's a situation where enforcement is the response. Um I don't think it's probably a wise use of our limited staff time and resources to come up with a registration system. Um I've not heard anything that makes me think that will sort of address the the challenge that we're dealing with. Um certainly not in a cost-effective way. Um the one education piece that that does make a lot of sense to me, and I know we've started to do, is just getting the signage out there. Um even the sort of share the trail signs that have gone up are great. Signs more specific to e-bikes, I think, would make sense at trailheads um or or high-traffic areas. And I I personally think the fifteen mile an hour bike signs in Boulder makes sense. Um I I can't think of a lot of circumstances where you ought to be going faster than that on a bike on the trail. Um you know, in open space or what have you. You know, I'm sort of of two minds. It's a, it's a rule that I'm not sure if it addresses exactly our problem. Um but it does seem sort of like a common sense speed to be going. Um and certainly slower than that if you're passing somebody. So I I don't know if others feel sort of compelled in that direction, but it's it's one of the ideas that stands out to me as being reasonable and sort of encouraging people to be courteous and respectful on the trail and recognize there's lots of other trail users um with whom they're going to have to share. So those are mostly my thoughts, and I I think largely we're on the right track, and it's a, it's a challenge of accommodating sort of a a culture change and a technology change. That sort of thing. So thank you.
Deb?
Thank you. Yeah, I I agree with what uh Dietrich just said. Uh I think the speed limit is good, especially on the trails. Uh I'm also interested in perhaps deciding whether bikes, the e-bikes should be on the sidewalks or in the streets, and if so, where, and because there's different configurations of the roads and different traffic uh volumes. So it could be different in different parts of the city, but signage about that would be helpful. And then also riding single file. Encountering, I also encountered four people on bikes coming at me on a on um trail up by the reservoir, and it's intimidating, because where do you jump? You go down in the ditch or you go over on the hill? Single file or at least double file limits, I think, would make sense. And in the streets also. But also on by, on sidewalks. The story last time from the lady who had to jump off the sidewalk with her baby in the stroller because e-bikes were coming at her and wouldn't go single file to allow her to be there, that was scary. So uh they need to share the road or the sidewalk or the trail wherever they are, and not you know, be allowed to take over the whole thing. So those would be my requests.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um I just want to establish upfront, um I one hundred percent agree with the comments regarding infrastructure and making our roads safer. I know that's a focus for this council, and we continue um to keep that front of mind in the decisions that we make. As far as the e-bike topic tonight, I also want to reinforce that um I think the rest of my council believes this as well. E-bikes are not inherently bad. Kids of Louisville are not bad. I believe that e-bikes provide a great mode of transportation. Um and also to the comments made earlier, provide accessibility to those who may not otherwise be able to use bikes as a mode of transportation. I think the challenge here is um educating folks about how to be safe on this mode of transportation, and also just in general that, but then when we we talk, we tend to talk about kids a lot in this topic. And I think it's because, to the point made earlier, we're seeing more and more people on bikes and e-bikes. on bikes and e-bikes because they're such a great mode of transportation. But then the kids in particular who don't have driver's license but get these bikes don't understand the rules of the road, right? And that inherently provides risk. So I just want to make sure we're all clear, like, we don't think they're bad. We don't want to take them off the road. We just want to make it all safe. I'll make a plug. I think there's going to be future discussions about golf carts and electric scooters. I've seen some of those on the road, but we'll table that for now. I, like, I think Councilmember Hefner summarized very nicely what I believe as well. I would, I do think the dismount signs are so useful. And when we see them in Boulder and other areas, it just falls under that education umbrella in my point of view. I, I believe that the education with the children in the schools is working. Just the other day, I was out walking my dog and I had two kids back to back say, coming up behind you. And I was like, oh, well, that's, that's nice. And I like to believe that that is a result of education in the community and us all working together to achieve that. I don't know if you guys can identify just by looking at the bike, if it's not actually a bike and if there's like little tags we can put on them at the schools to say like, you don't have a legal bike to be in middle school and be driving this or something. But again, just to, to educate, educate, educate and lean into that. That's it for me.
Thank you. Good thing we're going last is you don't have to ask the same questions over again. I had a question about the bikes that are being sold online that are over the seven fifty watt that qualify as a scooter. And is that something that can be regulated, just like a motorcycle sale online is regulated, an automobile sale is regulated? And there are requirements. You're not going to be able to sell a scooter, like an actual like moped type of thing either, right? Without some kind of guidelines? Is this something that needs to happen through the state legislature to try and educate people when they're buying stuff online? It's like, oh, you have to have a driver's license. You have to have it registered, just like you would a car if you're trying to buy it online.
I guess my comment to that is I think that'd be extremely difficult to manage. Looking at the, the information that we're putting out, if it's a low powered scooter, the state already has regulations for you to be able to operate that out in public. Like, I don't think there's any way to really regulate what you can purchase. I don't think it's, it's not an illegal item to own or to purchase. And, and regulating that type of low powered scooter, I think it's, it's pretty expansive because low powered scooter by definition can include a moped. And so then you'd have to extend the restrictions on sales to mopeds or other conveyances. And I think that may be where it might be like overly burdensome to try to, to regulate that. Where we're, what, what we're going to approach it with is from the enforcement part. If we see these, these on the roadway, we're in a contact and we're able to look at it and say, oh, well, this is not, this doesn't meet the provisions of an e-bike. Where is your registration sticker? Where is your driver's license? Where is your insurance card? And not having those items is where we can either take an enforcement action or provide some education as to, these are the things you have to do if you want to use this type of conveyance on the roadway. So I think that would be the more realistic approach. You know, regulating the sale of a low powered scooter, I think, is really expansive and that may be something that might be difficult to do.
Have we come up with since May, consistency around us? I think a lot of it applied mostly to Old Town, especially the kids like leaving LMS is whether they ride on sidewalks, whether they ride on the street, what they are supposed to do. Well, we can, if we, if there is an official position, we can say it tonight. Anybody paying attention can know. And then we can also can hopefully convey that as part of like this really terrific middle school education you guys are doing.
Yeah, so per the Louisville code, it is illegal to ride a bicycle or electric bicycle on any sidewalk within a business district. And so the downtown area is owned as a business district. And so the e-bike or bicycle would have to then move to the roadway and to the right side of the roadway, no more than two abreast as they're, as they're traveling down the roadway, but they cannot be ridden on the, the sidewalk in those districts.
So that's downtown, like where the shops and stuff are. What about Lafarge?
I mean, I'd have to look at the zoning map. If Lafarge falls into the business district, it would also apply there. So looking at the specific area of town, again, if we go back to the signage, we can discuss, okay, this is where the, the district starts. This is where it ends. And then within that area is where, you know, the dismount zones would, would be included.
I completely agree with the other council members. I think getting signage out there for everyone, so we know what a dismount zone is. Kids and adults know whether they're allowed to ride on a sidewalk or they have to ride in the street. You know, I've lived on the west side of town for almost thirty years. And anytime I rode a bike, in order to get to a trail, I have to ride on the sidewalk. I'm not going to ride a bike in the road. Been there, done that, watched way too many people get hit right behind my house or get damaged with rocks and hurt. And I'm not going to put myself in that level of danger. And I, I don't ride an e-bike and, and I guess what I'm hearing too is we don't distinguish between them. We say people riding bikes, right? There's rules, there's processes to follow. I want everyone, including people like myself, to feel safe using it. So I, like, I want to know that I can be riding my bike on Via Appia to get to, you know, one of the trails and then come into town to enjoy. And I won't know what I'm allowed or not allowed to do without signage because I'll have a kid in school who's going to be telling me, hey, Mom, you're not allowed to ride on that, which would be nice, but. So if we can do that, and I completely agree with the fifteen mile an hour speed limits that we put on the trails, if they're working. I think being consistent with our neighboring communities is going to be a really important thing for us to do because people ride everywhere. And I don't want somebody who's been riding a lot in Lafayette or in Boulder, all of a sudden be start riding in Louisville. And next thing you know, they're breaking a rule because we, let's figure out a way, I think, just to be consistent, so it's easy. And then drivers know what to do, bikers know what to do, pedestrians know what to expect. I think that, that consistency alone will save a lot of headache. And just a shout out again, thank you. I cannot thank you enough for this education, especially hitting the middle school. But to your point about cars and bikes, the thing I see the most is when I'm here in the downtown area, I will see teenagers, or at least they look like teenagers, on all kinds of different looking motorized bicycles. Some are these really tiny, strange, low looking things. I've never even seen one until about a month ago after one of our meetings. And the kid was speeding through town, sipping through stop signs. And, you know, people, pedestrians crossing over by Verde, having to stop in the middle of the sidewalk so that this kid could get around him. I see the kids doing the wheelies in the road. So I think this is the education and enforcement component of this because from the perspective of like a driver or a bike, well, i- if a cyclist is doing a wheelie down a street, they're almost endangering a, a driver in a car too because they can create the car, the accident instead of the driver always being at fault. So we have to be mindful that it is a shared space for the vehicles and the cyclist. Both, I think, have bare responsibility in minding the roads correctly.
Great. I'll give some of my comments and try to see if I can sum up what I've, what I've heard from everybody. You know, to, to respond directly to you, Ethan, thanks for coming back. I definitely think that what, what we've, what I've heard a lot as a council person is sort of this, one of our children is going to die soon if we don't do something. And so I don't think it's for me about blaming the kid on the bike. It is very much about like, their, their image is a car striking a bike. And the reason that they're concerned and want us to do things and we're not really talking about vehicles, I think we've heard, heard a lot of stories. And I, for one, I drive, when I drive, I drive down Spruce and the number of times a bike has illegally just raced in front of me and I have been going slow enough and I've braked and my heart goes through, you know, my throat and like, oh my God, one of these kids is going to get killed. And it might be because of an inattentive driver who doesn't stop in time while they run a stop sign. But we're trying to figure out like, gosh, this is really tricky, right? Because it's, we have rules. They're supposed to slow down at that stop sign. We have some rules about the low, low powered scooters and who can ride them, right? But there's rules and then whether they get followed or not. So I think there is a, a place for maybe some more rules that will or will not be followed, right? I mean, I don't, I don't want to, so for instance, the helmet rule that Steamboat has. You know, if we were to pass an ordinance in Louisville that says, anyone under the age of sixteen, which is theirs fifteen or under, anyone under the age of sixteen on a bike needs to have a helmet. That rule will be broken by lots and lots of people. And then we'll have the same conversation about enforcement versus education. And, and so there's the first conversation of, do we want a rule about children and helmets? And then second, having the rule, what, what effect would that have or not? And how would you enforce that rule or not? So same thing with registration, which I didn't hear a lot of. And really no one talked about the helmet rule, which is just an example of, of, of another rule you can put on. I, since this conversation started, honestly, as a council, I have purchased an e-bike. Shout out to e-bikes Colorado. I purchased an e-bike and partly the reason I did that was to have more personal experiences on an e-bike, if, if I was going to be a decision maker around some of this stuff. And so I've been riding an e-bike all over town, all of the time. And, and part of the reason also is, you know, not daily, but often, I'll need to go from my office to elevations on the chasm. And that is really close. But if I ride a bike or walk, I have just taken a huge amount of my day. But if I jump on an e-bike, it takes me about eight minutes to get there. And in a car, it takes me about six. So I've literally lost two minutes, except my bike is right in front of my office. I can jump. It might be door to door about the same amount of time. And I ride my bike to elevations and I, you know, do my transaction and I ride my bike back. I've met people at Paul's often now on my bike. It is getting me out and doing things. But I'm also experiencing what it's like to be on the road as a biker way more often in an absolute commuting fashion, not in a recreational fashion. And so it's really interesting experiencing in that way. And what I can tell you is one, one of the major issues we do have, again, is infrastructure. When you ride your bike on a bike path in our town, two lovely humans having a wonderful conversation are not walking single file. That's weird. And so as you pull up behind them, the path is just small enough that you kind of always have to decide how to, coming on your left, what? Just coming on the left, I'm just letting you know. But if it's a bell, it startles some people. If it's a nice comment, it startles some people. And I slow down very slowly and you still get people like, ah! Like they're, we're sharing the road, we're doing our best, but people get frustrated. And I have, you know, sat on my bike behind a wonderful group of fifteen joggers and they're having a great time. And you're like, guys, what are you doing? Like, you're taking up the entire, like, I'm on your left. And it's, it's tough, right? And so we have to be patient as a community, but there's better infrastructure that we've seen in other communities around where you can walk and where you can ride and giving bigger paths with lines on those paths about who operates where and when. And that's money. And as, as Councilmember Hefner put on, that's a really great solution that would take a lot of time and a lot of money. And, you know, we're trying to do other things in, in a shorter period of time. So some of the things that I've, you know, took, taken notes on and that are hard is I think we've had a conversation about kids on e-bikes and protecting them from themselves really and from vehicles. And teaching them how to be children, I'm talking non licensed, you know, eight to fifteen year old kids on bikes, whether they're regular bikes or e-bikes, and how to be better on their bikes, safer for themselves and kinder to people around them. And that's one kind of education piece. Then there's just like the adult, the adult conflicts of just commuters and bike paths. And, you know, I don't see a lot of adults pulling wheelies and running stop signs. It's a different educational issue of how to operate that. But education is still lacking and I don't think it's necessarily due to effort, but it's maybe due to time of being able to put that effort in. My friend's kid bought a bike online and it turns out unbeknownst to the dad, who's paying a lot of attention to it, he got the bike, it goes thirty-five. It's pretty cool. He said, what the hell, like, why, why does this thing go thirty-five? That is not what we agreed to. You got to keep this thing under twenty. You know, I don't want to see it go over twenty. His kid has an app, it's called Life360. And if he goes over twenty, it pings his dad and he takes his bike away for a week. I promise you, he doesn't know that his son probably has a low powered scooter that he is not supposed to have because he's not sixteen. He doesn't know the rule. Guess who else didn't know the rule until tonight? Councilmember Dickinson didn't know that his fourteen year old kid should not be on a bike that can go thirty-five. It's like he just shouldn't be. But I didn't know there's an actual registration, needs a driver's license and should not be operating that vehicle. So our education is still lacking and our communication is still lacking for people who want to be law abiding citizens. And my buddy would have in a heartbeat said, you're not allowed to buy that bike, actually. It's not allowed. That's why you don't get it. Because this kid mows lawns, he makes his own money, he bought his own bike. And he's like, hey, it's your money, you do your own thing. But if he had a chance to say, no, 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 that's actually not allowed. Gotcha. He would have done that. I swear, he's doing everything he can to keep his kid in check. So we're missing some of that. So those are most of my comments. What I would like to then sum up is what I'm hearing is we have general interest in engineering improvements over time, just like our roads and on our roads, that we are hopeful. I am hopeful and I'm hearing not a whole lot of argument that as we repave roads, as we re-stripe roads, as we build new roads, as we do things that we're thinking about, what is the safest way for, you know, bicycles to get around? I'm getting a head shake, so we don't have a unanimity there. But on trails, how to improve the trails, how to educate people. Again, infrastructure, I think of signage as infrastructure of this is where you start dismounting, this is where you either ride in the street or get off the sidewalk. You gotta walk your bike or get off the sidewalk when you're in this area. That is, that would be super helpful because I, again, don't, didn't really know that rule. I tend to stay on the roads. But, but knowing like, no, you really can't ride on, on the sidewalk here. So the signage seems to be, a dismount signage seems to be popular here. Fifteen mile an hour per, uh, uh, speed limit signs on paths seems to be popular. Thumbs up on, and again, this isn't like tomorrow, we expect a sign everywhere, but that we are in general enthusiasm of fifteen mile an hour speed limit signs, dismount signs. And I'm not seeing, can I just get like maybe a physical reaction to the concept of mandatory bike helmets for any subset of people? I'm probably a good, I see three no's, which now, your opinion doesn't matter, Deb. Yeah, cool, you're still in the minority. So we got about a two to three kind of thing there. So we don't have any sort of clear direction to head in that direction. Not looking for registration or any sort of, um, uh, uh, owner's thing there. Is there something else I'm missing? Yeah, so class, so again, class one and three are the same exact thing as a, as each other, just class one tops out at twenty and class three tops out at twenty-eight. And you want us, do you want something special for class threes?
I actually think that some of the public comment brought some good information for me. So I really do thank everybody for talking. But I, did I hear correctly that we, we have like a, a restriction on class three? It's the one and twos they can use everywhere. The threes are not the trails, is that correct?
Because of speed.
Yeah, that's correct.
I think we're putting in, we're, we're saying to people, be mindful of your speed with pedestrians and other cyclists and, you know, be mindful of intersections. I think it should be treated as a bike. I don't, I think I'd like to talk about the class three. I mean, if they're being asked to restrict their speed in on those trails, what does it matter if it can go a little bit faster? It still qualifies as a bike. We now have a new definition. We understand anything over the seven fifty watts is going to be a low powered scooter. So let's treat all three levels of e-bikes and bicycles with the same requirements and let that be to the owner's decision to say, yep, I know to do fifteen miles an hour on a trail, but it's my bike and I'm pedaling it. It's a pedal bike. It's not something that can be used without pedaling. So I think it's still, the, the user of the vehicle has to physically make it go fast too fast if they meant, if they choose to. It's not like they're going down a hill and they can't brake or something like that, right?
Yeah, so anyone else want to react before me? Yeah, I see, I think my reaction is probably in support of that. I think if, what you're trying to deal with is speed. And so if we are in one sentence saying we'd like fifteen mile an hour speed limit signs on our bike paths and then saying like, so whatever bike you have has to stay under that. I, one of the reasons I would concur is when I went and tested sixteen different bikes, I couldn't tell which one was a class one, class two or class three without looking at it. And so again, one and two, very similar, but throttle assist, but both travel twenty and like, oh, this is a three because it's so beautiful. Look at this, and he's like, let's Um, but both travel twenty and like, oh, this is a three cuz it's so beautiful. Look at these things like, that's a one. Oh, how's that? I had no idea. So for our officers or rangers or, or residents to be like, hey, you can't have that, I can't, can you stop so I can look at the tag on the, on the thing? I just don't think one can. So I think from an enforcement perspective, being able to tell the difference between a one and a three, the way you're gonna tell is cuz one of them's going thirty miles an hour. But that's the problem, is that it's going thirty miles an hour. So if I'm on a class one going downhill thirty miles an hour, that's the problem. So I just think from an enforcement perspective, we're being ridiculous if we think our officers or rangers will be able to recognize the, the style and brand of a one versus a two, cuz, cuz again, they look incredibly similar. And it's the way they perform that's different. So I just don't think we can enforce it anyway. Like, if we were enacting it, I would say that's not worth it cuz how are they gonna know? And we should just enforce a speed limit. So those are my thoughts on that.
I, I think I partially agree in principle. Um, my suggestion would be a uniformity idea that I think our, our neighbors Boulder County and, and city of Boulder, I'm not sure about Lafayette or Brimfield, but um, I think the no threes on trails is consistent with what our neighbors are doing, if I'm getting that correct. And all else being equal, I think I'd keep going that way. So it's not like, oh, when you cross over to Lewisville, the rule is different. Um, this is a confusing topic to begin with, and having lots of sort of grand newer dis- distinguishing laws between jurisdictions, I think would be tough. Um, but that being said, I mean, I think you raised fair points that if we're gonna have a speed limit, that's how fast you should be going. Um, it's not like we, we ban Lamborghinis from the city streets because they can go two hundred miles an hour. Um, so, I don't, I don't know, I, I would go with consistency myself.
Um, I think, I think you make a good point there. I think that's also, if we got into the conversation about helmets, that would be the best argument against it. Is that like, you don't have to have a helmet in Boulder, but as soon as you cross the line, like, now you have to have a helmet, like when rules, I know that that can be tough. It's like, cool, they need to change their rule, not us. So if you're, if your ride's gonna go through Lewisville with a child, put a helmet on. Um, but I, I agree that consistency is, is valuable. Um, so I could, I could go either way on that. How, how are we feeling as far as direction on changing? Also, we have a current rule, so which I'm gonna change, that would be another argument is to not, not change anything, but.
Um, I mean, I, I hear the concern about being consistent across the region. It also just sounds like it's not being enforced or it's hard to enforce. And then at this point, we're talking about, in my view, this conversation has boiled down to um e-bike versus not e-bike, right? The scooters and stuff. And so if it's an e-bike or a bike, you just don't go over fifteen, it doesn't matter what class it is. Um, so for me, I, I could get on board with investigating that part of our, our code, and if we just don't have it anymore, we're already not probably enforcing it consistently. I'm assuming so.
Yeah, I think the enforcement component, when we talk about like, you know, is this a class one or is this a low-powered scooter? We're not actively looking, we can't tell from roadway, or it's only if we have an accident, or there's some type of conflict where we now enter into that equation. Then we're able to look and examine and say, well, guess what? This is actually a low-power scooter. Now you don't have license, you don't have registration, things like that. Um, to be able to enforce the speed limit, especially like on trails, you know, there, there's a capacity issue, right? And I don't know that the Rangers have the ability to sit and run speed radar on our trails. But if we have an incident or an event where, you know, we can either show that there was, speed was a causation to the accident, that's where we could look at the potential enforcement part. What we are looking for, like Councilmember Heffner said, is, is some of that blatant safety violation. Like, riding in such a tremendously unsafe manner that, you know, you're risking your own safety, but also the safety of others. Those are the, the behavioral things that we're actually intervening on. It's not, you know, we're not contacting people as they're riding to see what type of, of bicycle or conveyance that they're on. So I, I do agree, I think that there, there is that enforcement part of it that, you know, are these gonna be enforced to the fullest? Probably not. Um, it's not realistic. Um, because we just don't have the ability to do that, you know, across the board. So um, certainly if it's, if it's, if there is an ordinance enacted or changes to an ordinance, and we come into contact with that event, we at least have something to be able to, you know, enforce or, you know, pro- pro- provide some accountability or something in, in that regard.
Thank you, Chief, and I'll add one wrench into this. So if we admittedly do not have the infrastructure that we would like um, to have bikes, e-bike or otherwise, and cars riding together in the road, that's like our long-term goal, right? Um, but in the short term, wouldn't it be nice for someone to come from another town, say, oh, this road, I don't really wanna ride on it, but I can go now with my class three onto Lewisville trails and easily get to the businesses downtown. Um, to me, that's a reason why we should allow them to get on our trails.
Yeah, I, I, I enjoy that. I think a really good example is um, like if I wanna ride from here to the sports table, I either have to go over the diverging diamond, or I have to go under an underpass, which is on a path. So if I have a class three, wait, so what, what am I supposed to like? So the point is like, oh, when I get on the bike path, I need to be respectful and go slower, cuz this bike is capable of going fast, but like, I can't? And of course, I just will, and I'll go slowly, and no one will complain, and I won't get a ticket because no one cares. I'm riding respectfully, right? Um, so I think it's, it's kind of one of those silly rules that we can't enforce anyway, so why is it a rule that we have? I also, it's not a hill I'll die on, because like I just pointed out, I think responsible people will just take their class three on a bike path slowly and be fine, and there will be no issues. And so they don't need us to change the rule in order for them to act. I just don't like that. It's like, if that, if that's not what, if the intent is don't speed. So I think, I think if we were to head down that direction, and we'll get to final direction in a second, it would be really important to me that we're putting these two things together, that we're allowing class three bikes on paths because we're also, you know, instituting more signage around fifty mile an hour speed limits. Cuz what we're gonna hear from our public is like, this whole conversation, and all you did was say, you can, you can do class threes on bike paths, like, what are you guys, that's not, no, no. We are understanding that there's between a bicycle and a non-bicycle, and that e-bikes are assisted bicycles, but they need to follow the rules. So I'm, I'm in support of that. Um, the last thing I'll throw out before we get final direction is can, is it legal? Cuz I know there's some stuff about like touching people's property. Is it legal for you to, you know, leave a tag and note, a, a door hanger, if you will, on class three, sorry, not class three, uh, LSPs, LPSs, dang it, my first try and I got it wrong. Um, low, low-powered scooters at the middle school, cuz I would say ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of our middle school students are under the age of sixteen, and they, and there's a bike there. So yeah, you might end up tagging a teacher's bike, you might end up tagging an older sibling's bike. But it, during the day when they're all just sitting there going like, oh, that is not a class three, that is a, or like, so I get that there might be a problem with it, but is it even allowed? Just go like, leave a note on those bikes, saying, hey, just so you know, you may not, this may be an illegal bike for you if you're not sixteen.
Yeah, I think it comes down to, um, you know, if it's in a public area where, where you can reasonably look at and see what type of bicycle it is. Um, we could certainly do a, a hanger from the handlebars or something like that. I think what it, it, it's actually a really good idea to engage the school and maybe do like, hey, we're gonna come around and inspect your bike, so that way you know what type of conveyance you have. And then provide the educational flyers and, and information so that parents are now aware, like, okay, a thirteen-year-old actually has a low-powered scooter, they don't have a license, we don't have insurance on it, and it's not registered, then they can take the appropriate steps to correct that. So, um, yes, it is, it is legal in a sense that if it's in, in an area that's, that's open to the public and accessible, and we're not violating any, you know, Fourth Amendment rights of search and seizure, um, that standard is met, certainly we can make contact. It's no different than putting a notice on an abandoned vehicle. Like, it's on a public roadway, and, you know, here's, here's what we've observed. Now, it could be a teacher's bicycle, and there, they may be licensed and insured, and there's no issue there. But I think it, it just kind of goes to another thing that we can do for outreach.
Yeah, I have a question on the licensing of those bikes, um, or that are not bikes. Don't they have to have a license plate or some kind of registration on the bike itself if it's registered?
Yeah, low-powered scooters.
We can require.
So the low-powered scooter per the state have to have a registration tag on it. Um, it was the small tag that was in the presentation. Um, that's good for three years, um, but it has to be renewed through the state and, and obtained through the state and displayed.
So that, so that if you go to, you know, LMS or LES, um, and see a bike that doesn't, that is the low-powered scooter, but doesn't have a tag, you know that it's not registered, and if it does have a tag, you can check and see if it's current. Is that right?
So on the decal itself, it has the year that it was issued, so you know if it's a valid sticker or not.
Right away. Okay, so then you could just tag those bikes or those scooters, and there wouldn't be any violation of them.
Well, the violation occurs when it's being ridden on a roadway. Um, so that's where, that's where violate, cuz again, it's not illegal to own them. Um, have them on your property, it's just operating on a roadway is what's against the, the traffic code.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Um, I think we're nearing the end here. So, um, again, you know, the, the things I'm hearing is that, you know, nothing new on our transportation master plan. It already has a desire to have multimodal. Um, but, but looking for opportunities for uh improving that. Um, that we would like to install fifteen mile per hour uh signs wherever possible on our bike paths, that we would like dismount signs where um most effective, especially in our downtown area, but uh commercial areas. Um, and that we would like to consider, you guys, give me a thumbs up here, uh, removing the restriction for class three e-bikes on bike paths. So, okay. Awesome. Uh, so feel like everything?
Yep, thank you, Mayor Pritchard. So a couple of these things will likely require us to come back. So one of them will be an ordinance change. Um, I don't know what our next steps for signage are as far as funding, things like that. So we've got the direction we need to put information together, and please, any of you on the opposite side of the table, if that is not correct, let me know. But it looks like we've got the direction we need, so we will come back to you all for your next steps here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, the final item, I believe, would be brief, uh, we'll see, but a discussion direction on city council salary survey, cuz like, obviously, we're all just a huge yes. Increase it, double it, triple it, quadruple it. We'll see what you actually say. Um, but we'll get a staff presentation real quick. No? Yes?
Yes, I'll be quick, I promise.
Uh, your face was like.
I was gonna say, three, four hours, we'll be out of here, I promise. Uh, you have in your packet, uh, having a hard time speaking this evening, information, thank you. Uh, comparisons that show what city council in Lewisville may compare to city councils in uh the front range, other cities in the front range. Uh, we broke out for you the full front range and also saw kind of the smaller cities and how you all compare. Pretty much you are already right at the median, uh, in fact, a little above for both. So, I mean, annually, we review all this uh staff's salaries and try and keep them in market. So it's really up to you guys, if you think that should be changed for you. I should note one thing is that if any of you vote to change your salary, it won't actually change your salary. Um, it will only change incoming council member salaries. So you have the information, we're happy to answer questions, and we'll take our direction from you.
Thank you for that presentation and the information in the packet, obviously. Do we have any council questions or? Yep, we'll start with questions and then open up to the public.
I'll just say from the finance committee perspective, there's not a lot of extra money, and, and we're asking people to make cuts in other places. And I, and I hope that council will share some of that pain.
Okay, we'll, we'll open it up to public comment. Are there any comments in the public? No? Okay, we'll close public comment and go to council discussion. Um, anyone wanna start with that discussion?
I actually, I thi- I agree with Councilman um Heffner that we, the, the city right now, at least looking into twenty-five, the budget's really tight. If things change into next year, we have additional, you know, businesses or the economy improves, I'd say let's revisit this in a year to see where things are at. But I agree, I think right now, um, I, I would be interested though to understand in other communities if the involvement, cuz I don't know if the public is aware just how much time is spent by council members. I mean, we were required to meet twice a month, and in the last year, almost every month, we have met every single week. And that's in addition to, you know, other boards and, you know, obligations that we have and like finance committee and uh PBC. So, and I don't know in other communities, the extent of the involvement of the council, if it's, you know, is always just twice a month.
Um, I will say, just from what anecdotally we know, uh, for cities our size, it's fairly normal. Um, larger cities generally have, like Denver, for example, has full-time council members that get paid it, and commit county commissioners get paid that. But for cities our size, I think the amount of time you guys put in is probably pretty average. For smaller communities, you know, they get, some of them get two hundred and fifty dollars a meeting or something like that. But those are some of the communities out on the plains, and it might be twice a week for, you know, it, it might be, yeah. If you go by a hourly rate, yes.
Yeah, I think, I think the uh spoiler alert, I don't wanna change anything. Um, but I think one thing that is true is um, it is difficult for anyone who does not have either, you know, the, the means or just the, the lack of need of money, right, which is, can be defined a lot of different ways to do this job. I mean, this is, this is a lot of work if you do it right. If you're reading the packets and you're meeting people, and you're, and you're fully engaged, it is a lot of work. And so there are a lot of people that simply cannot afford to do this work because we don't, you know, quote-unquote, value it with compensation. We don't compensate people fairly for the amount of time that we then expect them to put in. So there's like one member of the public listening and online, do we have anyone? Okay, well, this speech is gonna do a great thing. Uh, your council people put in a lot of effort, and it is basically a volunteer job. And there was something about it being two hundred and fifty bucks a month instead of like eight hundred or something after taxes, whatever. Um, that, like, it felt more like a volunteer position, and when you get paid eleven thousand dollars, it's like, wow, you're getting paid, like, okay. Um, so I think it's tough because this really is basically a volunteer position. Um, but with some compensation that can help with childcare, uh, with other things. And I think that's kind of how it needs to be seen as, is that this is voluntary. And you can use that money to help you do this job, but it is not the money that's gonna help you live your life. Um, and that is what we see around the state. And so if everywhere else, you know, people are getting paid thirty, forty K to be on council, we also need to do that. Um, but it seems to be the norm in our society to say, well, if you're retired or otherwise well-off enough that you can do this and spend this time, um, then, then you're the ones who get to do it. So I think it's something to continue to look at um, over time, but, but I don't, I don't think we need to be the one community that's the outlier. So, um, like I said, my position was clear, but it does need to be spoken about once a year. Anyone else? Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Briefly, I, I mean, I agree with you in principle, that if we could make this a forty thousand plus dollar a year job and recruit more diverse folks and younger folks and, and people who actually need it to be a job, that'd be great. Um, I don't think that's where we are tonight.
We did recruit the younger folks, we have the two of you.
Thank you. I think where we are financially as a city and also looking where we lie in comparison to surrounding municipalities, we should remain where we're at right now. I would be open to explor- ugh, exploration if there's other ways that, non-monetary ways that individuals could be supported in order to increase and diversify our applicant pools in the future. Um, and those could also maybe be extended to boards and commissions as well, those non-monetary benefits.
Excellent. And, and some of that was in the packet as well, you know, childcare, meals, or things like that, so I appreciate that.
I would like to, I mean, it's, it's a nice thought, but I would also like to make sure that things are done equitably by providing um non-monetary benefits to some. You are therefore not providing any benefit to others that maybe don't have that same, the determined need that that we were, the city would determine. So that's the only reason I like it to be if somebody needs help with something, it should be monetary because then everybody can have that same thing. And it is equitable for anyone who chooses to serve on council or a board versus a meal that maybe some people, that it's just not their lifestyle or they don't have children, they don't need daycare. But there are other reasons and other things that they would need compensation for. I think it gets complicated to then say, ooh, we approve this kind, but not this kind.
Excellent. Thank you, staff, for everything tonight. And thanks to public who came and all of our amazing people. Go ahead.
Congratulations and thank you for a year with the city.
Nice work. And with that, not needing a motion or a second or a vote, we are adjourned.